Thank you, Brian. I'll call this the regular meeting and special city council meeting agenda, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Pastor? Thank you, sir. Will you please rise, please?
Hello, everyone. My name's Doug. I'm the youth pastor over at the Shoreline Church. Probably explains why I'm a little underdressed for this, so I'm sorry about that. But with that being said, I'll lead us in a prayer. Don't mind closing their eyes. God, we give thanks. We can gather here in San Clemente. I pray for wisdom and discernment once everyone, as they're discussing these topics. I pray that you'd be in the midst of this and that you'd be glorified through everything and that ultimately we would realize your son and that you'd be seen here. Thank you for all that you do. Your great name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Washington, will you approach the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Please put, face the flag and put your hand on your heart.
Everyone repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that council members, Ferguson, Ward, Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, and Mayor James are here. Council member Noblock is absent.
First item on the agenda, motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Mayor, I do have one speaker that declined to provide their name for item number two, items requiring immediate action.
Okay.
So if that speaker would come to the podium.
Following item which requires immediate action. Ensure the city's immediate compliance with its municipal code eight point four eight point zero nine zero C. On December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Atamman told you that the city was exempt from noise activities that are conducted in city-owned parks. As you can see from this slide, what he stated was not only incomplete but was completely misleading. The city is exempt only if the noise from said activities does not exceed eighty decibels, unless permitted pursuant to a special event permit or other city-issued approval. There is no public record approving an excess of eighty decibels, three hundred and sixty-five days per year in a city-owned park. January two thousand nineteen, Ms. Wiley requested Mr. Atamman's staff take the decimal reading at four pickleball courts in San Luis Rey Park. It exceeded eighty decibels. I provided you copies of this email. Three and a half years ago, the city new pickleball noise exceeds eighty decibels. It is incredulous that they failed to inform you of this when they recommended you approve installing eight courts in another city-owned park and place it as close to residents as possible. The city is violating city council established policies and local ordinances, which is negatively impacting San Clemente residents. Slide number two, please. The second item is that the city and city council immediately comply with the municipal code eight point four eight point zero one zero, declaration of policy. Item B states, therefore, the city council does ordain and declare that creating, maintaining, causing, or allowing to create, maintain, or cause any noise in a manner prohibited by or not in conformity with the provisions of this chapter is a public nuisance and shall be punishable as such. By now, we all know California government law regarding public nuisance code three four eight zero, one which the city manager, with the city attorney's full knowledge and apparent consent, is also violating. City council, you are failing to supervise the city manager and the city attorney. Require the city comply with its San Clemente municipal codes as well as California laws. City council, it is also alarming that you have violated your own declaration. Residents have suffered for years due to the city and city council failing to comply. Your actions are punishing residents.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the city attorney. Thank you. And Ms. Hall, the city attorney tonight, could you tell me how, listen to the presentation. I was at the meeting when I asked the code enforcement manager at the time how we could continue to have pickleball in violation of our municipal code, right, the decimal level. Okay, so that's all. Now we have more information on that. We can, in the event of a special event permit. But could you please opine on how we can continue to exceed the decimal limit even outside of a special permit being issued on a daily basis, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, as our speaker had presented?
So I am actually not familiar with this ongoing issue. As you know, I haven't been involved, but I would be happy to refer that to your current city attorney and have him get back to you on it.
Okay, but when will he be back? We haven't seen him in a couple of months.
You know, I really can't speak to his schedule. I'm just here to cover for this evening.
Okay, because he's really been missing in action and it's really, I think, hurting us in our comprehension of things going on and decision-making tonight. Well, okay, yeah, I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't mind following up with him and getting him to write the city council on this. That would be much appreciated so we can get to the bottom of this once and for all. Thank you.
Of course.
Ms. Ward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was about to speak. I would like to move up in the agenda before we take public comment. Item. I believe it's ten G. I believe it's ten. New business ten G. And I will have a motion for that.
Second.
For what purpose are we moving it up?
We, I'd like to move it up because there might be some people in the audience that are, this is at the end of the meeting. We have a long agenda and I'd like to dispatch with that at the beginning so that they can be able to leave if they want to.
Well, we have a motion. We have a second to move it up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
No. I'll go aye. So four one with Mr. Noblock in opposition.
I would like, so that item is now before the council. I would like to make a motion. This is a discussion of email redactions and it was agendized by two council members but failed to have a majority support. I would like to agendize them, or I'm sorry, I would like to make a motion that we table this item with no discussion at this time. That is the motion.
And what is your legal basis for doing that? This was a policy that was followed, twelve oh one dash eleven, to place this on the agenda.
Can we take a vote?
We have a motion on the.
You're out of order, Kathleen.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Councilmember Ward, what was the purpose for tabling with no discussion?
Because I, oh, I think it is in the city's best interest not to have a discussion on this item. And I, I think the council can vote on that.
Because there are potential legal implications.
I think there is, yes.
I'll second.
Thank you.
City attorney, are you able to opine on this? Or are you, are you, are we best served by you not making a public comment at this time?
I guess I, I am happy to speak to the motion, which you do have the right, if you so choose, to table a matter with a first and a second, and if that's the will of council. We do have, it is on the agenda, so if there are public comments on it, you would want to take those as it relates to the motion and the item, but you are able to do the motion as it's been presented. Does that answer your question?
That does answer my question. So it's entirely appropriate, even if we're going to table, to take public comment at this time.
It is.
City clerk. Thank you. Yes, please.
Wait, should, city attorney, should we not take the vote first before we take any public comments? Because we're, we're most, we're, we're making a motion to table it.
You are making a motion to table an item that is on the agenda, so we have to give people the opportunity to speak to that item before we take the vote. Yes, okay.
Okay, so city clerk, please.
Two speakers, Martina and Brad.
So once again, we have an issue with this city and a lack of transparency. And this lack of transparency isn't in the best interest of the city. This lack of transparency is designed to hide the city's malfeasance. Myself and twenty-two other citizens were doxxed by this city. And instead of remedying the issue quickly and quietly, the city chose to gaslight us, insult us, and make false allegations about us. Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, who was not on council when this occurred, spoke about and suggested that Laura's attorneys ask for these documents to be published online. There's no proof of that. More so, whether they choose to publish the documents or not publish the documents, the city did have an obligation to redact our personal and identifying information. But they didn't. And I find it interesting, when there was the two A resolution on the table and public comments were submitted and we weren't able to speak in person, the city kicked the can down the road numerous times to silence people's free speech. And when those comments were, should have been read, instead, from the forty-four people that submitted comments before they allowed people to speak live on the issue, they were supposed to read those comments aloud, but they didn't. They just said, oh, no, councils read them. We don't know if council read them, and if you're going to publish a public comment, publish all the public comments, not just a select few who you want to dox and humiliate.
Thank you.
I, I think the idea that this council doesn't seem to be grasping is that you don't need to redact documents if you first, you waive deliberative process like San Francisco did thirty years ago. The city, if you look on the website, it says the city's transparent or anything but transparent. They pay BB and K thirty, forty, fifty thousand a year, to actually more than that, over sixty thousand a year, just to make sure there is no transparency. Why doesn't this council do what it should do? And if you don't want somebody to read what you write, Ms. Ward, don't write it. You can do things orally and now it's not discoverable. So when you send things to the city manager or other council members by writing, that's discoverable. That, you shouldn't even have a redaction policy. Just provide it to the citizens. I don't know what you want to hide. And what you did tonight is even worse. You moved up an item and then tried to terminate it so nobody could speak to it. Again, you don't believe in free speech. You don't believe in people doing what, addressing items that you want to address. This council couldn't save so much money if they start using common sense. Okay, that's not a hard thing to ask for. And, and, and as I will say later tonight, you have an opportunity now. Mr. Sun decided to take a better job in Big Bear Lake. Good for him. Congratulations. And now the city has an opportunity to hire a new city manager and get rid of BB and K. You've had a demonstration tonight, why, Scott Smith hasn't been here in three months, four months. He sends a lawyer, I'm sure is a great lawyer, but doesn't have any idea what our, what the city rules are and couldn't answer a simple question from councilmember Ferguson, which to me is an obvious answer. The city is required to enforce its rules. But she couldn't even opine on that because she doesn't know San Clemente. Apparently Scott Smith doesn't care about rules, so he would opine differently than any other lawyer, including Mr. Duncan and Mr. Noblock would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. City clerk.
Next item on the agenda is oral.
We have.
We have an item. We're not on oral communications yet.
We still have.
We have to vote, and there's discussion too.
And the motion is without discussion.
I thought there was.
Yeah, no discussion.
I thought there was another speaker.
We can make comments, though. And.
Mayor, can I make comments?
Not on the content of the item, but how this was being absolutely canceled. Another cancellation by Ward to muzzle me and not discuss a very important item because it's a cover-up. So may I make a couple of comments? I'm allowed to do that under the policy, am I not?
You are allowed to speak to the item, to the motion to continue or to table.
Okay, this motion to table is ridiculous. You once again want to hide and cover from, cover for someone, city manager, city attorney, maybe yourself in this matter. You win all the time, but you're such a sore winner. All you needed to do was vote tonight to either waive privilege of the email with the redactions by the city attorney or vote to not waive them. Okay, simple as that. But you couldn't even do that tonight to allow my item on this disclosure of personal, private identifiable information to be discussed tonight. So this is really unfortunate. Once again, I, as a council member, place an item of great importance to the public on an agenda with the support of one other member, and you're going to cancel me. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor James.
Thank you. Mr. Noblock?
Yes, I, I'm not sure that, what the nature of the discussion of this item was going to be other than that it was about email redactions. I've been very concerned that, that the doxxing that has been described in the public comments occurred and I suggested to staff that, that we not take the legal approach of, of waiting for a request, but just simply do it, and we would have avoided four months' worth of discussion at four months, four months' worth of public members being concerned and communicating to this council during oral, oral discussions. It would have been a simple resolution. I'm not sure exactly what, what we were going to cover in the discussion tonight other than possibly set a public policy to address this issue, but, so I, I have to vote no because I don't know what the, the nature of the discussion was. So to just table it and discard it is the antithesis of transparency. So I can't support the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I think this is, this is another item intended to try to embarrass staff, and that's really the purpose behind it. And I agree with the motion because I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it at this, at this time.
Ms. Ward.
I call for the vote.
Attorney. In regards to not tabling it, but it, I, I believe we can say this. It is your, your advice. This should not be a matter of discussion this evening.
So best Mr. Krieger has provided confidential legal advice to you as to our thoughts on this item. I believe that's all been provided to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
City attorney's advice in the memo is misleading. I'm a no.
Three, two, with Ferguson and Noblock in opposition. No votes. Thank you. Okay.
Mike is going in and out here. Oral communications, part one. We have thirteen speaker cards. So I will call the first four people up to get in line. First, first is Brad, then Sarah, no last name, Mindy, no last name, and Christian, no last name provider.
You've been given a great opportunity tonight. You have no city manager going forward. And I want to tell the, the city and the residents that this is a city council that has been listening to the power and system of staff that has systematically eliminated employees from the staff. And then claims and lawsuits against the city for that, I believe, have resulted in over a million dollars of payments to those people, and there's still significant number of claims that are pending against this city and naming certain city staff members in particular for the abuse and cause. By the way, you didn't start my tone. Thank you. It's time for the city council, even with the decision you just made, which is one of the most absurd. And by the way, this has nothing to do with embarrassing staff, and Mr. Duncan, you should be embarrassed for saying that. This is a legal issue. You know it. It's a pure legal issue, and it's not embarrassing. Staff didn't make that decision. It was made by the city lawyers. So that's, you're misleading the public again. I, I don't understand how you can constantly do that, not tell the truth. But this, this council has a chance to take the city back. And they can do that by getting a city manager and a city attorney that actually follows the lead of the council rather than the other way around. I think that the city has become complacent. The council's become complacent and listens to what the city attorney tells them to do and the staff tells them to do in inadequate agenda reports that fail to discuss the subject matters in great detail. And then the council members, like happened tonight with Mr. Duncan, pit one group against another, instead of just addressing the issue. We should stay on issues and not on people. I say that as I abuse that, and I'm sorry for that. I shouldn't make it personal, and I apologize to Mr. Duncan for doing that. But I, but I think it's time, more importantly, to terminate BB and K. Mr. Smith has not shown up for months, even though his contract says that he will be the city attorney. The people he sends in his place don't know answers to the questions. He has another lawyer, CJ, reviewing the agenda report, then I hope that this lady, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, has read the agenda reports, and Scott reads the agenda reports, and you're billed three times for them. Then you're billed for agenda reports that city attorney prepares that are more than two hours, even though the retainer says all city services are included under the retainer. There is no provision for charging for more than two-hour agenda reports. You're being fleeced by BB and K. The report you got from, your review, not an audit, said that they were the most expensive around. You don't use the most favored nations. We're paying the highest rate of BB and K around. And this city is spending this money like it's going out of style and doesn't do anything for over seven years to get these under control. It's your time to get a new city manager, a new city attorney, and you should do this with skill, over time, not make rash, rash decisions. I will get to that on that item, the closed session item. But why is everyone in a hurry tonight to select an interim city manager without any discussion unless there's been, like I believe there has, a Brown Act violation? Because otherwise, how could it get agendized? Oh, it could be by staff, but staff shouldn't be picking the next city manager. That should be a very, very important decision by this council over a period of months, not days. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm here to speak about the problems at Maxburg Park lately. I've been a San Clemente resident my entire life, and for the last seven years, my family and I have been living on our home on El Prado, directly on the park. Over the years, we've witnessed countless, countless incidences of violence involving the local gangs at the park, heads getting kicked in in broad daylight, fights involving baseball bat beatings, guns being waved around, stabbings, crazy stuff. Most San Clemente residents have no ideas going on. I've woken up more mornings than I can count to displays of graffiti from these gangs in spots all around the park, on the sidewalk, around the children's playground, on the trees, on the bathroom walls, anywhere they can tag, you name it, they've tagged it. And I do appreciate that the city has been very quick at covering that up and having that painted over, so I do appreciate that. A few weeks ago, on Monday, July twenty-fifth, when families and children were going about their day, enjoying the beautiful afternoon at the park, things were taken to another level. Shots were fired in broad daylight. A young man was attempting, attempting to murder another, ultimately shooting him in the head. My children, ages four and six, and their grandmother had to witness this firsthand. No one, adult or child, should ever have to fear for their lives the way they did that day and something, doing something as innocently as riding their bicycles around the neighborhood park. They were feet away from the shooter. They watched him, arm extended, firing rounds at the man. My children were thrown to the ground by their brave grandmother, and they were laying there ducking for their lives, hoping that he was not going to turn his gun to them. Sadly, my little boys remember all the details from this horrific event. They know what the shooter was wearing, the piercing sounds of the gunshots, the blood. The whole incident was just horrific and traumatizing. Thankfully, Stray Bull, it's harmed nobody, but are we going to be this lucky next time? Less than two weeks later, on Sunday evening, right in front of our house, a second attempted murder. They nearly stabbed someone to death. We live front row and we see firsthand everything. We know more than most residents do, and this is not acceptable. Not to mention, this is happening in front of an elementary school. San Clemente is supposed to be a safe and healthy atmosphere for people to play and live in. Currently, we do not feel safe to live and play here. Bottom line is, something needs to happen. Maxburg Park needs to be made a priority. We got to clean it up. I know it's been a hangout for gangs over the years, but we just, we need to make it a priority, and we need more police presence. We need cameras, cameras on the intersections, so with license plate recognition, take out the benches, take out the pillars that they hide behind. Please, just make Maxburg Park a priority, cleaning it up. Thank you.
City manager, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we have two-by-two briefings from our chief of police on what's going on in Maxburg Park and at, and also agendize a, to have our chief talk about the gang activity to, to the level that he can talk about it at our, our next meeting. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir.
If, if I may, Mayor, we were prepared to provide a brief update under city manager comments. I was going to allow Tony Binfield to have some of the time. If the council wants, I can give a brief update and then turn the mic over to Tony if, if you would like that.
We can do, we can do that tonight?
I, I'm ready to do it right now.
If you're ready, if you're ready to do it tonight, but we'll, we'll let these speakers go, but, but at the conclusion, during your, your comments, we'll, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You can contact the Fair Practice Political Mission on that. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for this time. I'm the grandmother. That was there at the park with my two grandsons. That is my lovely daughter-in-law, my son, a firefighter here in San Clemente. My name is Mindy. And I witnessed this, and I was the grandmother that lifted by the arms in that moment of adrenaline superpower, picked up two little boys by their arms and threw them on the grass face down and covered them with my body. Initially, when we heard the pop, 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 we thought for sure it was fireworks. You know, fireworks go on through the month of July, unfortunately. And it was not, because out of the corner of my eye, I saw the shooter running with his arms stretched out and a gun at the end of it. And I turned to see the young man that he was chasing and firing at. It was terrifying. Just beyond words. Sorry. All I could think of was one of those bullets was going to hit one of my boys. And if I could take that bullet, that's what I wanted to do. When I looked back, the shooter was basically where Brad is sitting and pointing the gun. We heard, when he hit the victim, we heard the grunts. We listened to that. And I looked back, you know, the moment goes, seems like forever. I turn around to check on the boys. And the victim had walked across the street, holding his head with blood pouring down, and he laid right down next to my four-year-old, which terrified me even more because I thought now we're in direct fire line of the opposing gang member. And he looked at me, I looked at him, and I said, you're going to be okay. Nine-one-one is on the way. And I turned to see where the shooter was, and he was already running the opposite direction towards the church. I grabbed my boys and we ran. And there's just no words. I'm sure you all listening to this can understand and comprehend. This was in a moment. I'm sixty-two years old and I've lived in Orange County all my life. I've never in my life experienced anything like this. And I'm fine. My boys are fine, but they will remember this forever. And I can remember growing up in Tustin, where there was no stoplights in the sixties. And my parents always said, nothing will ever get done until someone's killed. And I'm praying, praying, praying that that's not the case here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Evening.
My name's Christian Peterson. I'm the father of those two boys, and I'm the mother. Currently facing, I live here in San Clemente, currently facing Maxburg Park. I'm a firefighter here for Orange County, Station sixty, right in downtown. I'm a husband, father of two beautiful boys that go to Los Palmas Elementary School, which is right now. I'm a husband, father of two beautiful boys that go to Las Palmas on a mentor school, which is right next to Maxburg Park. I'm here today not as a firefighter, but as a father and a husband, I want something more than a safe neighborhood. Where I can feel confident going to work, knowing that not just my family, but every family in and around Maxburg Park is not subjected to violence to these gangs. If you grew up here like I did in San Clemente, like we all did. It's no secret that Maxburg Park has decades of violence. That includes attempted murders, shootings, stabbings, fights, drugs, and graffiti. In the last seven years, living at this address, Maxburg Park, we've been subjected to all of it. On July 25th, there was a shooting at the park during broad daylight. My sons witnessed the whole thing. I could, I wish I can take away their memories, but I can't. Local sheriffs were amazing. Truly. Sorry. That night, my six-year-old tucked him in and he was scared. He thought I was going to come back and shoot him. So where do we go from here? After talking to neighbors, law enforcement, sheriffs, detectives, uh, we've all concluded that we need to change it. So, uh, like my wife is saying, cameras, license plate recognitions on all four corners. Um, brighter lights, more sheriffs that walk through, um, they've done that and they're awesome. Cracking down on the people with open containers of alcohol that sit there at the tables all day, drink every day, all day. And last but not least, I know it's a far-fetched, but uh, maybe even taking out the, the center amphitheater. They use the walls to hide behind when the cops drive by, the pillars they tag up, the bushes they throw their drugs needles in. Center amphitheater. Is there a sanct, is there a sanct, sanctuary they hide in? I say, take it away. Make the center park for, for kids. Make it larger. Nothing but sand and jungle gems and whatnot for the families. I took a note from Orange County to serve the people as a firefighter. I know that every time I leave to work, that could be my last time to see my family. So I'm asking each and every one of you, remind yourselves of the oath and the power you have in the chair that you sit in right now. So please make that park safer. So that I myself and all the other people in this town get to see their loved ones when they get home from work.
Thank you.
Next five speakers are Lay Brother, Sterin, Gerard Seblowski, Martina, James Gilbert, Mary Farrell, and Mary Heron. Lay Brother.
Good evening, beloved, uh, mayor, city council, and, uh, wonderful San Clemente citizens. Prayers to the family here too. Being a military man, I can assure you that, uh, I know the importance of being a Franciscan lay brother, that the ways of peace are so important. Maybe all of you can, uh, put some type of a symbol of peace in this park that I've never visited. What has brought me here is, uh, I'm a pro-life speaker nationally. And I've been monitoring your city a little bit because you've been in the limelight in that regard. So after you, uh, resolve some of your present problems here to make the city appear to be and, and soundly to be more safe. I've left you a Bible bookmark with my information on it. You're welcome to email me, uh, text me anytime that you like. Uh, your city has actually made a, a nice gesture for becoming a pro-life city. Uh, inside the womb, and of course, it's got to work outside the womb also. No question about that. Uh, you want to refrain from the A B O R T I O N word, word approach as a pro-life speaker. Your new word needs to be personhood. I met Nellie Gray, if you don't know who she was. She passed away in 2012. She is the conservative Democrat lawyer from Texas who started the March for Life in Washington DC. So she's a very prominent member for pro-life in the United States. I myself am a pro-life Democrat, so I know I can have some nice delightful conversations, even in my own Democratic Party. The new direction for your city, however, I'm going to recommend that you consider when the political currents are right for it. And then you're going to call me back. It's important for your city to move in the new direction of establishing a city charter. Once you establish a city charter, you can actually put the personhood language right in your city charter. You're already a pro-life city anyway. So you may as well preserve yourself as such, but the correct steps are not going in the direction of an ordinance first. Your correct steps are to get a 15-member commission, which takes about a year to do. And then you establish that commission and you actually establish a city charter. That's my guidance to all of you. I would like to stay here and meet with some of you, but actually I'm supposed to be at another city council meeting here. But I wanted to go ahead and put you in my, uh, time too. Thank you. God bless you all. Serve, uh, solve those problems. God bless you all.
Carolyn Blair.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Blair. I've been, um, a resident homeowner in San Clemente for 36 years. I was here at the last special meeting that was called and the agenda item was supposed to be discussed tonight about having a resolution. Uh, we had a lot of protesters. I don't believe all, well, I know not all of them were from our community. Um, felt very overwhelmed by the hostility that was shown. I guess I would like to first, if I could, ask the committee, has Planned Parenthood or any other, um, abortion-oriented industry tried to get into San Clemente? Is that what prompted the resolution that Steve had suggested? Can someone answer that for me?
We can't respond to you on that right now.
You can't respond?
No, it's your time to address us.
Okay, uh, well, I would maybe Charter City is the answer. I don't know, maybe looking at the resolution and having something short. Um, that gets to the problem, but I would just like to urge the city of San Clemente not by licensing, um, zoning, whatever, to allow abortion facilities to come into our community. Um, I, I think that the other speaker was right. We need to understand the personhood of the unborn child. Um, at the time sperm and egg are fused, there's fusion involved at that time and moment. That child has his DNA at, um, I think it's 22 days, the, uh, heart starts beating. He has his own circulating, he's circulating his own, he or she, their own blood through their system. And I mentioned last week how gruesome abortion is, and I do want to share some of that this week with you. And I will, we'll be sending something to your emails, uh, that you can view. Because I think people misunderstand abortions become a sanitized word. And I think, um, people are not really looking at the actual, what abortion is. And I had a note of, um, as early as, um, 12 weeks and, uh, certainly by 20 weeks, an unborn child can feel pain. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Just when we thought it was safe to go back in the water. Our beloved beach town is once again under threat of another predator trying to sneak its teeth into us. For years, active and engaged citizens fought hard to defend the threat of San Clemente becoming a thoroughfare connecting the 241 to the I-5 by the TCA. This city spent an obscene amount of taxpayers' dollars on consultants without a clear statement of work. And to city attorneys for BBK on a lawsuit that was rendered new and the city's claim of resistance against the agency. The city claimed victory with the signing of the Lost Patrols Parkway Extension Cooperative Agreement that would connect the 241 to the I-5 using PICO as a conduit. This agreement also included ambiguous language in regards to the creation of HOV lanes on the I-5 in San Clemente by the OCTA. And one of the proposals, Alternative 2, which would widen the I-5 with the addition of north and southbound HOV lanes. This would require the use of eminent domain and certainly encroach on homes, schools, and businesses. Whilst San Clemente and perhaps most of the country were busy debating on a non-binding resolution to make a city where surgical abortions aren't even performed in, a pro-life sanctuary city. The deadline for public comment on the scoping session was scheduled to close on August 15th at 5:00 PM. I urge all residents to contact the OCDA with your concerns and demand a no-bill option. Send a message to the OCDA and our city council to speak in opposition of Alternative 2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James Gilbert and then Mary Farrell.
I tried to come by a couple of weeks ago when they were talking about the abortion thing. And I was going to ask, um, why don't they focus on stuff like this for the skate park here? Um, I about 10 years ago tried, um, got copies of sign, and got copies of newspaper articles handed around and they got this, um, San Clemente Skate Park Coalition started with some other people. Um, I got like, I think at least 10,000 signatures for San One. Kerry Ferguson, I remember, I think I talked to you over by the beach. It was like three, four years ago before COVID and I got them like, I think it's a 3.2 or 3.5 million dollar grant for it with all those signatures. Um, but one thing I want to say, the, um, when I came a couple of weeks ago, some guy with a pickleball thing said that they had already started the environmental studies for San G. Um, I drove by there the last time, maybe a couple of days, a week ago, it didn't look like anything had been started. I haven't been to the skate park in San Clemente, at least in a couple of weeks. I like going down to Prince Park in Oceanside. I got injured real bad skateboarding. It hurts the ollie, if you know what that is, and I like to roll down and up around the things there. It's easier for me, being older, but um, if they, when they get the, um, Richard T. Steed Park built, one thing what I think is kind of stupid with the design. Like for example, they have these pump track things and they have a asphalt one and a dirt. Cement would be way better. Like, um, Spawn Ranch, for example, did one in Lake Elsinore. And it was like asphalt and it just doesn't roll like the cement. And they did one in Del Mar area and I always see pictures of people going down to that and skating there. So if you want to look at the plans for, you know, all the parks, it'd be nice, maybe if they put maybe them both in cement. Where like one was more for advanced people were went up higher and then the other one be more for, you know, kids, maybe, but make them both cement if possible. I mean, dirt. Um, I think it would cost a lot more for them to keep up the, you know, if they make it, um, you know, just dirt, it'll cost a lot more for them to repair it and all that when they use it, but if they're both cement, it would be a lot, um, better that way. Um, have, do you know if they've started the environmental studies on both of them yet? For the parks, for the skate parks? They can answer? Okay, um, but, um, you know, that's, I just came here, um, to let you know my ideas, but if they can change those two pump tracks, you know, and just, um, cement, it'd be real nice. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mary Heron and I have some reflections from Saturday, August 6th. Outside, I was met by activists and with megaphones shouting women's rights slogans. Inside were mainly pro-choice people warning that they would vote out the city council, especially Steve Knoblock. Because they had the audacity to consider life in a sanctuary, a sanctuary for life in San Clemente. They repeatedly said how this was an embarrassment nationwide and mentioned that it would be bad business for San Clemente. Basically, most had very coordinated talking points. They often interrupted pro-life speakers without correction. What type of ethical movement would have earlier in the week made serious enough threats to the council, as the mayor mentioned? So they would have to move up the meeting date, which eventually led to a bullied and rushed vote. That bullied rushed vote impeded timely communication to both sides for a fair representative representation before the vote. One side got priority. One male denied that the fetus was actually a life with a heartbeat. The American Pediatric Association disagrees and reaffirms, and I quote, "The predominance of research confirms that human life begins at conception, fertilization. The difference between the individual in its adult stage and its zygotic stage is form and not nature," end of quote. "The heartbeat is actually detected from 18 to 22 days after conception, which surprises many and is denied by so many." Someone mentioned incest and rape. Tragic as that is, it statistically is less than 1% and does not justify 60 million plus abortions. If I drive my car at 60 miles an hour, that's my freedom. If I drive at 100 miles an hour, that becomes license because I'm endangering others. Does a woman's bodily freedom give her the choice to endanger another life for her freedom? That again is license and not freedom. What about the baby's rights? As John Randall said, this is not a political issue. This is a human rights issue. Margaret Sanger and Eugenics Movement later morphed into the current abortion machine. Alveda King, Martin Luther King's granddaughter, quoted Sanger as saying, colored people are like weeds. Today, 38% of the abortions performed are on black babies. That is not healthcare. One woman shared the body parts were being sold for very high profit and she was laughed at. Please research my following two examples. Number one, our NH, NIH in the HHR in 2016 spent $103 million of your taxpayer money on these experiments with fetal body parts. 2017, 98 million. 2018, 115 million. And 2019, 120 million. And a biotech company now makes food, food flavorings from that. Blacks Law tells you your silence is your consent. We can no longer sit silent. Thank you, Steve Knoblock, for not being silent despite the threats and the bullying tactics. Well, supporters of life can vote too. We look forward to November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, Mary Farrell.
Thank you all. I would love to see San Clemente become a sanctuary city for life. We have a whole state, whole state of California that's sanctuary city for abortion. And now our legislature is trying to make it a sanctuary state for transgender transitioning of pre-adolescence. Okay, so it'd be great if we could be that sanctuary city for life. So I'm here to say revise that prior draft resolution, put it back on the agenda. A simple resolution declaring San Clemente a pro-life sanctuary city where number one, the city will protect pregnancy counseling centers from vandalism and violent attacks by extremists, as has happened in many other cities. Two, the city will welcome and seek private support to assist mothers who are being pressured to abort their babies by abusive domestic partners or others who need to find medical or financial support or adoption counseling to keep their babies alive. Thank you all. God bless you.
Mayor, we have six remaining speaker cards for our communications part two. We are at the 30-minute mark. Would you like to continue with our communications now or add it to?
We'll add, add those six to, uh, part two. I want to get, we're, I want to, um, city manager, I, I would like to, uh, get Chief Binfield up here to talk to us.
Can everyone hear the, the comments in the back? Okay, I don't know if your mic is on.
I hear you now.
Yeah. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, so, uh, for the public comments regarding in Max, Maxburg Park with regards to the recent incidences that we had. So we're very, very aware. Um, myself, Captain Binfield- Um, myself, Captain Binfield and a number of other O C S D representatives walked the facility or the site, uh, last week. A couple of things that you may have already noticed, we've removed the plant, the, the bushes by the wall have been trimmed down. Uh, we're installing a camera on the bathroom roof. Uh, the lights have been upgraded to L E Ds so they look brighter. Those will be on from dawn, excuse me, from dusk to dawn. Uh, they will not go off until the sun comes up, so that area is lighted. We're seeking a quote to remove the wall and the bollards. Um, we haven't gotten the quote yet. I just checked with my public works director and he's still working with staff, but. We're very aware of that area that you referenced where they sit. Um, and we're looking to see if we can't remove that wall, um, and hopefully it's cost effective. And we're looking at some other, uh, upgrades as well to the park with regards to other cameras and so forth. The lights will be upgraded in the next couple of weeks. You'll see a capital improvement project that's starting just coincidentally. So we'll have new light bollards that will replace the old ones. And you'll probably notice there are some ballards that don't exist anymore or a light pole was. They will get a light as well as part of this project. And again. It'll be bright from da- dusk to dawn, um, but I'll let Captain Binfield speak specifically to O C S D's efforts as it relates to this issue.
Yeah, thank you, uh, council, mayor, um, to address that some of the comments made here tonight. Uh, the sheriff's department is keenly aware of the issues that are occurring around Maxburg Park and the residents of this community know that, uh, it's been relatively quiet there. Recently, it has now picked back up, but the problems around Maxburg and in other areas of the city date back decades. Um, we are working with the city with some of the mitigation measures that the city manager brought up to try to. Increase visibility in the areas of the park where we know that these subjects like to hang out. Um, we also are increasing patrol checks as, as we can. Uh, calls for service, for service permitting. And engaging with the community, I think we're scheduling, trying to schedule like a town hall or a neighborhood watch meeting. Uh, with that neighborhood as we speak, so I think that's in the works as well. Um, but yeah, we're aware of the gang, the gang, uh, enforcement team is aware and they are monitoring and engaging, uh, the members of that community as well. To try to keep this activity, um. Nonexistent, hopefully.
Captain Binfield, if I could, Mr. Mr.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, what's the frequency of the patrols in that area? I think just the physical presence of the, of your deputies would, would have a big impact there.
Yeah, and, and it's a, it's a great question and it's important that the community understand that there are few of us, few of us. And every area of the city is, the city is broken down into different, what we would call, uh, patrol areas, watch zones. And every zone is assigned a deputy. However, uh, when they're on a call, they're, they're on a call and they're tied up and oftentimes they're drawn out of their patrol area to assist in another. Um, because there are a few of us, we rely heavily on the community as a force multiplier and, and we value our partnership with this community to. Contact us anytime they see something suspicious or if they, uh, hear something. If there's anything that they're concerned about at all, we rely on their input because we can't be everywhere at once. Um, when there are no calls for service, the units that are assigned to those areas are on routine patrol. Um, but this is a busy city and so there we are, uh, we do what we can.
Any other council members? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, Chief Benfield, do you believe you're well staffed or are we understaffed? As a police services department?
Yeah, that's a big question. Um, I mean, I would never say that. You know, don't send more, more help. Uh, I don't think the community would, would say that either. Um, on the, on the other side, I do understand how expensive it is when we're adding law enforcement positions and it's important for the community. To know, as I'm sure the council knows, that you, you have to add four additional deputies just to, just to cover one new position because. We're twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. So it's actually four bodies to create one additional position. So, um. It's a cost that, that I understand. I don't take it lightly. Um, you can always do more with more people. But I, I wouldn't want to break the bank either, uh, trying to, you know, put a, put a deputy on every corner. I know that's unrealistic.
Okay, thanks for answering because I've, I've seen. Over years, the same chart and we continue to be, uh, under, you know, the least staff, so to speak. Per capita, per thousand population, right? Compared to all each communities in Orange County in L A. So that's why I asked the question. Cause we're starting to see, you know, some real serious issues. So, um, just wanted to get it from you, right? Directly from the expert, what you think, um, could maybe change that. So thank you for responding.
Ms. Ward, do you have any question? Oh, wait, Ms. Ferguson, do I?
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
So Captain, um. Isn't it true that with the, uh, the gang unit that the sheriff's department has, we have specialized teams within what we're able to pick from? Are, are we not getting extra attention now because this has happened?
Anytime there's a significant event, it does draw extra attention. Um, keep in mind, our, our gang teams are regional. So the sheriff's department has a south gang enforcement team and a north gang enforcement team. The south, uh, team is responsible for all sheriff's contract cities, um, essentially from Lake Forest South. Um, and then this summer has been very busy for them. I'm sure you have heard there's been a number of shootings and incidents in Laguna Hills and Lake Forest. Um, so they're, they're, uh. They're busy. They're, they have a lot going on, but, but of course, when we have a, a significant fight or a shooting, um. All the attention comes to us. They start working those cases. Both of the cases references to, reference tonight are active investigations. Um, so I can't comment specifically on them, but, but yeah, it does, it does draw additional attention.
Okay, I just, I wanted the public to hear that we just don't have our patrol officers or the only ones working on this that we.
That's correct.
Do have a history with, uh. People in San Juan, uh, possible San Clemente and that does get attention if, if it does come up. Um, I would just say to the council and to the public that one thing that I've been concerned about. Um, is, you know, with the pandemic that we were in and, and everything being so closed. We're seeing more drinking in public, not enforcing or not enforcing, but not following laws. We're seeing that. Um, from people across the board, not just people that are hanging out in Maxburg Park. And I have a concern about that. I think it's important for all cities. Every, everywhere to get back to enforcing normal things that we expect. Out of our society that will not happen. People will not be drinking in public. And, you know, hearing that people are hiding in a certain part of the park, that's, that's news to us, but it sounds like the neighbors have known it. And, and seen it, but we all have to say that that's not okay anymore. We are back to, to normal. We're all out in the open. And we have to start doing things the way we should be doing. And so I, I just wanted to say that I'm concerned that that has contributed greatly to, to kind of what we're seeing right now. Um, so that's just my wish.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem.
Sure, um, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming today, the, the family, um. As a father of a, a six year old, a nine year old and an eleven year old who've played at Maxburg Park frequently, I, I can only imagine. The pain, uh, and thank you for your heroism, ma'am, uh, with your, with your grandchildren, um. You know, I've also witnessed the, uh, I've done ride longs, right, with the deputies and they've been very clear, Captain Benfield, about the, that, that area. As, as an area where there is some gang activity, right? So this is an area we know about. I think. There's absolutely nothing more important than the public safety of our residents, um. So we should certainly look at, at additional funding for deputies to be able to cover that area. I think that's something we'll get right on. The question is, is this something that you think Captain Benfield, our public safety committee should, can, can take on as a specific priority item? Is, is that something that might be beneficial? Or do we kind of just already know it? A lot of it is George, just more, more manpower, more deputies in that area.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, it, it's a well documented area. It goes back a long time. The, the problems that have, have kind of been there. They're persistent, uh, generational. Um, you know, the public safety committee will, I'm sure would entertain anything you, you guys would, would throw their way. Uh, but I, I don't know what the scope of their research or project would be. Um, that would create something new or tangible that we could put into effect. I'd be happy to.
Sure.
Talk about it with them.
Um, okay, so going back to Councilmember Ferguson's point, then really, if there was one thing, it would be additional deputies potentially to be able to patrol that area.
Adding more deputies would, um. Lessen or consume time as it relates to calls for service.
Sure.
And that would give deputies more free time for proactive activity. And, uh, targeted patrol efforts in various neighborhoods. And tonight we're talking about Maxburg Park, but.
Sure.
Last weekend, it would have been Talega and the Donuts and the street racing. Uh, this entire community deserves equal attention. Um, and, and so more deputies certainly help that.
Yeah, I mean, again, with the ride alongs, they are very busy. They're constantly busy, so they're constantly getting pulled to other things. So, uh, thank you for that, Captain Midfield. I, I, that makes a lot of sense. Appreciate it.
My, my only final comment, if I could, is, is that in, in any community where, where we have a number of police officers. Uh, it's always easy to add more police officers, but when you have a specific area that's as troubled as Masberg Park with stabbings and shootings. I just think focus ought to be there. Uh, my neighborhood doesn't have shootings and stabbings. I would expect police officers in that area if there were, and if they were, if there were shootings and stabbings in my neighborhood, I would expect to see police officers. On a regular, frequent basis, uh, more frequently than other parts of the town that aren't experiencing. So. I, I don't think it's a staffing issue. I think it's a priority issue and I, I would just ask, uh, Captain Benfield that, that you would, uh, focus. On that area consistently and frequently, uh, and it's a historical issue and it needs to be addressed and I, I, I think you have the ability to do that. So, thank you for what you're doing. Encourage you to keep it up.
Any other council member?
Mayor, if I may, really quick, just cover one thing. And I think Captain Binfield is planning a neighborhood watch. Is that correct for the, for the Maxburg community?
Correct, yeah. I think they're trying to set a, a date.
So we'll be engaging the, the residents locally. And one thing that I would communicate to all the residents of Maxburg Park. Um, if you don't have a Ring camera, I highly encourage you to put a Ring camera on your house if it faces the park. Um, that is sometimes the best evidence for O C S D to solve a crime. As it relates to a vehicle and so forth. And so as we're putting up cameras, I would also encourage those residents. That's not a very expensive cost and it does help immensely. So just as a F Y I, and I know you're going to cover that at the, the. Uh, meeting that you'll have locally as well. Thank you, Mayor.
And so I'll just, I'll just, uh, finish this by assuring the community that. In Captain Benfield and Chief Benfield, you have the constant law enforcement professional. And he, you know. He str- you know, he, uh, I know how much he cares because we've had a number of conversations. And I think it shows in how, in the service the deputies, uh, provide to us. When we have situations like that, because the one thing I didn't hear anything about, I didn't hear any finger pointing about. Uh, towards what, what law enforcement did do or didn't do. Everything was, was done. By textbook, everything was done professionally and, and, you know, and I, I will just. As Mayor Pro Tem did, I'll reach out to the family and tell you how profoundly impacted I am by your statements tonight. And, and we, we will focus on this because no family, regardless of what street you live on in this. Uh, in this city should live in fear. No child should witness what your, your children witnessed and I have, you know. I, I just don't, the, I don't have the words to, to tell you how profoundly impacted I am by you. Thank you.
Um, I, I think maybe it might be appropriate, uh, Mayor James, to actually to agendize a, a, an item. Specifically on. Whether we can increase resources to, to address this issue with additional deputies and what we would need to do from the. Finance side, from the budget side to, to make that possible. Do I have a second for that? Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make it a third so that we have a staff report with details.
All right, perfect. So, um, thank you, Captain Benfield.
Thank you.
I know, I know we have six more speakers. We have a hard, we have to be back here at six thirty and we have an issue to talk about in, in closed session. Uh, so I apologize to those six speakers, but you will have an opportunity in public comments to. Tonight to, to have those public comments. Um, do we have?
We have one speaker that has requested to pull an item on consent, which is up next. And then we also have three speakers for closed session. Would you like to?
I think we have to put consent off until.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so I. I say we put consent off until after our presentations at six thirty. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
And, and, um, we will ha- take the public. Comment on the closed session.
We have three speakers for, two speakers for, uh, closed session. Brad is going to speak on closed session items A and B. And then we have another comment with no, uh, with no name.
Thank you.
Counsel, the closed session item is called public employee appointment. Pursued to government code interim city manager, city manager. How did this item appear on the closed session less than a week after Mr. Sun gave notice? Who placed this item on the agenda? Certainly not counsel because they've never suggested this item come before it. The title states the schedule will be of an actual replacement, either interim or permanent. Yet the council did not provide staff instructions. There is no process in place. And I suspect that a Brown Act violation has occurred. And Gene, just to be fair, I wasn't trying to be flippant with you. I was trying to suggest that you modify it. So what you want to do, which I agree with, is done properly, uh, rather than improperly. I know you didn't intend to violate the Brown Act. Why is there a rush here? Mr. Sun remains in the city for more than two weeks, which means there's another council meeting. That could, where this item could come up when the public can be engaged. I don't think you should be selecting in an emergency session today, which is what it is. Uh, uh, an interim city manager, uh, when there's plenty of time to discuss this in public. What the process is, how you're going about it. The person themselves, I understand that needs to be done in closed session. Cramming an, an interim or permanent city manager tonight would be a disaster for the city. We've seen what a disaster has been done by. Well, I'm going to leave that alone. At a minimum, this item should be delayed for two weeks. You've talked about delaying items. These two items should be delayed for two weeks. While this council, if required, gets an emergency, uh, meeting for which it will discuss the process going forward. This may be the most critical since Mike Parnas and most of you don't know who he was. But Steve certainly does and some other and Laura. That's the last great city manager the city's had. Not putting down any others, but that's the last city manager that came prepared to battle with council over issues. Rather than force issues down councils' throat. It's time that this city gets a process together because the last one was a nightmare. None of the candidates in the city wanted in order were selected and instead. An illegal process was done where Mr. Sun was part of the process of selecting a new ma- manager and then he became the city manager. Which is a pure violation of the city law. Which, by the way, for all those who think I sue over everything, I did not sue over. Um, so I asked this council to delay this for two weeks and the interim used its time and process. To think this through, not take staff for explanation and obviously outgoing staff as to who should replace the city manager.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
May I? Thank you. I'm city, uh, city attorney. I'm not sure you can answer this question, but. Um, I saw Scott Smith, our city attorney quoted in the paper about how council is going to talk about, um, the interim. Uh, appointment, right? The placeholder till the recruitment's done in the paper. So, um. Yeah, before I even knew about Mr. Sun's resignation, um, but how, how was, it, how was he involved? And yes, how did he orchestrate this, um, agenda item? Like we didn't have a, a meeting to discuss it, a special meeting or anything, um. I, I went to skip my, uh, agenda report from City Hall, uh, over the weekend and I saw, uh, Mr. Sun's resignation letter in my mailbox. Um, but I did see it, of course, in the newspaper before that, but I just want to make sure that, uh, we are following. Um, the procedure, the protocols that are, um, ethical, right? And transparent because last time, Mr. Smith himself brought Mr. Dunick in to be, be interim city manager. And Scott was in the room when I asked Mr. Dunick. I was surprised to see a candidate there because it wasn't conveyed to me at a meeting. And, um, Mr. Dunick said, oh, Scott, Scott told me to come, so brought him out of retirement to be the, um. Interim city manager. So could you maybe, I don't know, I know you're here as a placeholder for the city attorney, hasn't been here for a couple of months, but. Could you kind of maybe shed some light on this, how this was done?
So the city attorney places items on the agenda, doesn't place items on the agenda. The city attorney makes sure that things are placed properly on the agenda. So if there was a request made by, uh, the mayor or by the current city manager or whomever. Uh, we would put, provide you with the language to place the item on the agenda. Uh, the city attorney does not actually place items himself, uh, unless it's related to litigation.
Okay, because he does write agenda reports, um, for meetings like tonight. There is one on here. Um, okay, so just so the public knows and it's transparent, um. Because the speaker did mention, um, interim position appointment tonight, et cetera. Um, please clarify, we, we do not, we haven't started the process for recruiting candidates for an interim or. A city manager position outside of a council vote yet, because I, I haven't voted on that.
So it doesn't require a city, uh, council vote to do that. Um, if you have items before you, I, I can't speak to that. Uh, what you do have is on your. Uh, what you do have is on your agenda, the two items necessary that would allow you to go into closed session. To discuss the process, whether or not you're going to appoint, what you're going to do, sort of what your thoughts are on that. Uh, and if you want to direct a process, then you know, you can, you can provide direction to staff as to whether to bring that back to you, to implement that. Uh, but without these items on the agenda, you would have no ability to have that conversation.
Oh, no, understood. I guess my question is just so the public knows, um, behind the scenes, any members up here or staff, which would be improper. Hasn't lined up a candidate or two for us to talk with tonight in closed session.
I can't speak to the actions of your staff or your other council members.
Thank you. Fair enough. Thank you.
City clerk.
Martina. With the announcement of city manager Eric Sund's departure. The current city council is entering enclosed session deliberations and discussions of the appointment of an interim city manager. While the recruitment and screening of a permanent CM might take many months. I do not feel that a lame duck city council should be the body that casts that deciding decision. With an upcoming election and three councils seeks to be decided on. This in all likelihood could be the most important decision they will make in their term of office. A competent or an effective city manager has a direct impact on the day-to-day operations and the vitality of a city. But it must be noted that a pattern is starting to emerge. And the influence of BBK and the selection of city managers in this city and elsewhere. Former city attorney James Matronoff resigned shortly around the time of the 2019 special, special election. And accepted a position in the city of Pomona. The law firm that represents that city is BBK. As Councilwoman Ferguson spoke to the interim. City manager Bob Dunick was from Lake Forest. That city's law firm is BBK. And city attorney Scott Smith is their assistant city, city attorney. In addition, Eric Sund is going to Big Bear Lake. Their city attorney is Big B, BBK. In addition to a new city manager, a new incoming council, it's time to clean house and get a new city attorney. Thank you.
Brad is also commenting on closed session item B.
I try to be very short, but, um, what the city attorney just said defies explanation to me. Maybe I misunderstood. They said you were going to sit and talk in closed session about the process to select a new city manager. That is not a closed session item. In fact, it's not proper to be in closed session. That an item, uh, to discuss policy is an open session item. There is no. Brown Act permission to discuss that in closed session. So if you do that tonight, you'll be violating the Brown Act with your lawyer providing it. On this item though, again, I want to say that conferencing about negotiators, there is no person to negotiate with at this point. And again, if this is process, it has to be done in open session. And I would think as a transparent city that you said. Both of these items, except for selecting the person, have to be done in open session. How you're going to go about the process, who you're going to hire to recruit for you, et cetera, et cetera. Don't hide it from the public because it's illegal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close session.
I just have before we adjourn, uh, presume that's where we're headed. Uh, just one question on how this did get agendized. I, I assume that the mayor has authority to place. Items on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, did you, you place that on the agenda? Is that correct?
I did place it on the agenda.
You did? Okay. That's, that's what I thought. I just was curious. Thank you.
Uh, I move that we adjourn to closed session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
It's unanimous. Duncan, motion James second.
So, City Attorney, are we allowed in the public to make a motion and vote on the appointment of a subcommittee to recruit for an interim city manager?
Yes, I believe you can. You have on your agenda this evening the appointment of an interim or a city manager. So the public has been given notice that you'd be discussing that item if your action were related to that, which it would be creating a subcommittee to have that discussion, you would be able to do that this evening.
Councilmember Ward, you want to make the motion?
I make a motion that this council vote to appoint a subcommittee of the mayor and the mayor pro tem to recruit and hire a interim city manager forthwith.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion by Ward, second by James, unanimous, City Clerk.
Next item is Wall of Recognition 2022 honorees.
Okay, City Council, let's go. We're starting. There it is. Brown. So this is one of the fun things to do as mayor. And City Clerk's office finally got the message from me, stop making these these resolutions so long because I run out of breath. But I want to honor, we got honor two outstanding San Clemente residents tonight, two outstanding citizens. And first, we'll start off with Mr. Don Brown. 2022 Honoree to the San Clemente Wall of Recognition. Don Brown retired from a career as a U.S. Marine Corps pilot and test pilot and brought his leadership qualities to serve the San Clemente community. Don served on the San Clemente Planning Commission for 11 years with three terms as chairperson and on the Coastal Advisory Committee for three years. Don has a reputation for his detailed knowledge of San Clemente and was involved in the update of the San Clemente General Plan. Don Brown has had significant involvement with several nonprofit organizations. Karen, I think it's more several, isn't it? Including three years with Peer Pride, six years with San Clemente Exchange Club, and 13 years with the Boys and Girls Club of the South Coast area. He served in a leadership capacity as both president and board member with each group. Additionally, he has served other nonprofit organizations, including San Clemente Donna and Casa Romantica. The San Clemente Community Center continues to benefit from Don Brown's leadership abilities, his knowledge about the city of San Clemente, and his many volunteer efforts. Sign Gene James, Mayor, City of San Clemente, dated the 16th day of August 2022. Congratulations, Don Brown. I guess we're taking pictures. We're gonna take a picture and then let you say something. Okay. Picture first? Yeah. I'm beach casual. I'm ready. Thanks, Sean. Thank you. Few words. Few words.
Let's make it short. I'm so proud to be here and I was blown away by this whole nomination. I didn't know it was coming. There was clandestine meetings, which my wife got involved with. And I'm so honored to be here with you, Fred, and see you here tonight. Our living legend to be here and thank the City Council for all the kind words. And it's the people that I've been involved with, both city staff and all the organization I've been involved with. It's a great town and I just love being a part of it and being, try to make it a little better. So thank you very much for this honor.
We have so many great legends in San Clemente, so many icons of this wonderful city. And now I'm going to present to Mr. Fred Swegels, one of San Clemente's icons. 2022 Honoree to the San Clemente Wall of Recognition. Fred Swegels was raising San Clemente and in his lifelong career as a journalist has covered the many issues and activities of the San Clemente community for decades. Beginning his career as a sports reporter with San Clemente High School Newspaper, The Triton, Fred has reported for local newspapers, San Clemente Sun Post, Orange County Register, and San Clemente Times. Fred's dedication to documenting San Clemente happenings led him to attend thousands of public meetings and countless events and activities to bring unbiased information to the community. Fred Swegels' love of San Clemente led him to travel the world in search of sister cities bearing the name San Clemente and document his efforts. So well-known in the community, Fred is described as Mr. San Clemente. Fred Swegels' tireless commitment to impartial reporting on local topics and interest stories for five decades has resulted in tens of thousands of articles and photographs that make up the fabric and record of the San Clemente community. Sign Gene James, Mayor, City of San Clemente, California, dated the 16th day of August 2022. Mr. Swegels, congratulations. Yeah, absolutely, please.
Hi, my name is Barbara Chamberlain. I'm Fred's sister and my other sister Valerie, mayor, is over here. I just wanted to say something on behalf of Fred. He would like to tell you that his heart is so full of appreciation and gratitude for all of you, the people of San Clemente, and he's so honored to receive this award. Fred's always loved San Clemente, his home since 1954. And he's always had a passion of writing about San Clemente and capturing our beautiful town and its people in his photographs. He loves the people here. All of you, the San Clementians, are the true jewels in his heart, and Fred thanks you so very much for this award.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, sir.
We love you, Fred.
Okay, so do you want to go to the beginning of special presentations now?
What's that?
Do you want to go to the beginning of special presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay, then the next item is, are you ready?
Let this crowd. Okay, City Clerk, go ahead, please.
Next item is presentation by Community Development Director Gallardo Daley concerning the implementation of permit streamlining opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a presentation that I need to pull up. And Adam is going to start us off and then I'll wrap up the information item for you tonight.
Could we, could you, I can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Yes. We have a brief presentation. Adam will start us off. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Adam Matamian, Deputy Community Development Director. We can go to the next slide, please. So this item that's before you was referred to the Planning Commission. And at a previous meeting, we took the items that were contemplated for streamlining to the Planning Commission to get their feedback. There were some overall comments generally, the Planning Commission was concerned about any streamlining opportunities that may reduce public notice for the, for neighboring property owners specifically. Anything that would potentially alter the design review process for historic structures. And then the commissioners did request examples of pros and cons related to each, to some of these items specifically. When the, depending on council's direction, we will go back to the Planning Commission and staff would provide more detailed explanations of the potential streamlining options with, with those requested pros and cons. Next slide, please. Generally speaking, the Planning Commission was very supportive of streamlining the code. There were a few things that they were not supportive of, specifically streamlining opportunities that would allow for more staff level review and approval of projects that would alter historic structures were, were of concern. Things like the height of ADUs to match resistant structures was, was of concern. We, when asked to weigh in on a potential shot clock streamlining opportunity, the Planning Commission was, did not weigh on, in on whether they were supportive or not of that particular proposal. What they did say, though, was that they prefer that that item be tabled until the Planning Division's current work program is completed and then, and then touch on that item in the future. Next slide, please. And then as far as Planning Commission support, they had a number of items that they would like to see staff move forward with related to sign programs and monument sign approvals, non-residential accessory buildings, walls being over three and a half feet tall and front yard setbacks. And additionally, simplifying applications generally, they were supportive of. As far as the existing work program, I will report that the Planning Commission was very supportive of what the long-range planning team is currently working on. In addition to that, the Tracket upgrade, that's the city's computer project tracking software, they were very supportive of that effort moving forward. And along with the specific plan updates, which also speak to the simplifying of process and applications process that the city has. And with that, I will turn this back over to Cecilia.
Thank you. If you could advance to the next slide, please. When we came to the council back in May to talk about some streamlining ideas or opportunities, the council asked that in addition to getting some input from the Planning Commission, that we come back with a schedule for implementation of these permit streamlining opportunities. And this schedule represents fitting in permit streamlining into our current work program. So this is the schedule for implementation. The starred items represent the permit streamlining project. This schedule is based on the importance of completing the work that we're already doing, putting off as little as possible, but fitting in this effort into our, our current work program as a priority. So moving from left to right, the majority of the work on specific plan updates is almost complete. We plan on going to the Planning Commission in September for their recommendation on all the specific plan amendments. Those specific plan amendments or updates involve six specific plans and those will be coming to the City Council in October. Also in September, we will have near completion of our project tracking system upgrade. So with that in mind, we will begin work on the permit streamlining changes in September, which is next month. And we expect to complete the code changes by the end of this calendar year in December. This still allows us to continue working on the housing element update rezoning, which is required in compliance with state law. So one thing that we did have to push back in order to accommodate this streamlining opportunity is the schedule for completion of our coastal implementation plan. That's going to be pushed back a few months to March. The timing works out, though, because the specific plan updates, the housing element code changes, and these permit streamlining efforts need to be folded into the coastal implementation plan. And we can't really finalize the coastal implementation plan until these other efforts are concluded. So that ends the staff presentation and we are available for any questions.
Council? Please, go ahead.
So I have just a worry on the, you can put that presentation back up. The timeline that was just up. It shows that for the housing element, the rezoning, that's not happening until December. That could, that's going to be a whole entire new council. I wonder if that's something that we should think about. The housing element is somewhat complicated. It could be their very first council meeting. Is there any way that that could come before just the first meeting in December?
We can look at our schedule and try and make some adjustments and move that up. We'll talk to BB and K. They're, they're working with us on those things. The, the housing element rezones are grouped into two different categories. One is those changes to the code that are required to come into compliance with state law because the state has mandated these housing changes. The second batch is the tailored housing element changes that reflect San Clemente. Those will come later. So we, you know, we're hoping that these aren't going to be too complicated. Our hands are really tied when they're state mandated. But we'll look at the schedule and talk to BBK, who's helping us prepare those ordinances.
I appreciate that explanation and it, it's something that's just trying to come in where we're compliant with state laws. It's not going to matter. I just thought it was actually approving, you know, this update. And so if it's us going to be later, then there's no issue on it. I was just concerned about the very first meeting that someone might have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you for the report, Cecilia. I'm so happy to see the progress on this. I met with staff, you were included, and Councilmember Noblock earlier this I met with staff, you were included, and Councilmember Noblock earlier this year on some of the improvements that were underway. You know, it takes, takes time and it looks like you're making a lot of progress. But what about the payment for permits now? I know we were waiting about, I think it was six months to be able to implement that application into the program on the website to be able to pay for permits online versus bringing a check to City Hall, having it deposit, lose three days, right? Can you explain to us if, if there's been some progress in that or if it's implemented?
Yeah, that's all part of the Trackett upgrade. So we are in the process of working with our IT department. And the Trackett upgrade is scheduled to be completed next month. So when that is fully completed and implemented and it'll have more of a public-facing interface, that payment system will be online.
Good. So we'll be pretty much a hundred percent online, right? Because we upload plans at this point, right?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Good to hear. Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
Question. The concern that I hear on streamlining from a lot of developer and builders is, is the the failure to be able to step into City Hall and, and get the plans filed and approved. I understand that we have the automated system in place. We have to get online and make an appointment. What, what's the impediment to simply opening the doors and allowing people to come in like they do almost everywhere else and, and walk up to the counter and say, I'd like to file my, my papers. And, you know, contractors generally are A-types, you know, they're, they're, they're not computer geeks. They're, 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 they're moving quickly. They, they, they need a plan. They want to, they want to come right in. Is that a problem to simply allow access? Which I, I'm hearing a lot of people would just like to be able to come in and file their plans. What's, what's with that?
Yeah, so anyone can make an appointment to file their plans. Anyone can, can, can come in and we will help them. We are working with the City Manager's Office to reopen the lobby to the public in a couple of weeks.
So, so right now, they can't come into City Hall and file papers, but in a couple of weeks, they can?
Anyone who comes into City Hall, we will help them. We don't, we don't turn them away or tell them, oh, we can't see you because you don't have an appointment. But we are going to have regular hours where we are open to the public. And people don't have to make an appointment to visit with staff or to get information.
So if someone comes in right now and says, I'd like to file, file a, a plan and, and get a, pay a fee and get a permit, they're not told to come back and make an appointment online and then come back?
We will do our best to help them if they're standing there right in front of us. We won't turn them away. We, we, we don't turn them away.
Thank you.
So I want to explore this. I, that the lobby's not open. City manager, I think, I think council needs to, to give direction that that lobby needs to be open.
And understood, but keep in mind, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist. The City Hall lobby doors are open, so people can come in absolutely and get service. You know, we're struggling with staffing, so if someone comes in and wants to file a permit, they may have to wait a significant amount of time until someone who's available to sit down with them and go over their issues. To the Community Development Director's point, yes, we'll do everything we can to help them in terms of filing it and submitting it. And then if there's, you know, additional TLC needed, we'll, we'll work with them on an appointment to make sure that we have resources set aside to address their needs.
But I, you know, I just wanted to find. If we're not open, what are we? I don't think we're closed.
No, we're not closed. We're open. It's just, if there's an expectation of here's my plans and I need to.
Doing in two weeks.
There'll be actually dedicated staff at the counter facilitating public hours. So when you come in, there's someone who's working the counter, waiting to deal with the public versus right now, everyone's on appointment.
Okay, now I, now I understand. I thought you were still going under some COVID protocol or something. Got it. And to, to Mr. Noblock's point, you know, two, two and a half years ago, three years ago, there was a clamoring for, for this Trackett program. And we spent, you know, from, from the contractors, from the developers, you know, we would like to do all this online. And I mean, I, I haven't been very patient with how long it's taken. But thank you for finally getting there. But I do think there is a certain segment of, of, of that community that will welcome being completely on, online and paid for. Council members?
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm good. I agree with you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
City clerk.
Next to the presentation by Financial Services Officer Ron concerning the third quarter financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Jake Ron and I'm here to present the third quarter financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which is the, for the quarter ended March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The third quarter report continues to focus on the general fund since that is the main operating fund of the city. A couple of highlights from the report on revenues for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Budget revenues were at seventy-three point nine million and actual revenues through the third quarter were forty-nine point two million. General fund revenues were four point eight million higher than last year at this time. And currently, we're at sixty-seven of the, sixty-seven percent of the total budgeted revenue for the year, which is similar to last year's sixty-six percent. More revenue information is discussed throughout the report. Overall, property taxes and sales taxes continue to come in higher than previous year based on current economic activity. And then additional, additionally, TOT and other service-type revenues have rebounded from the lows of the pandemic and continue to come in higher than originally budgeted. For the expenditures, the twenty twenty-two budget totals eighty-one point three million for the general fund and expenditures ended the third quarter at fifty-four point eight million. This year's costs are four point nine million higher than last year at this point. Percentage of budget at this time last year, though, was sixty-seven percent, which is consistent with this year. That, some of the increase is related to annual increases in both the police and fire contract costs. And you may notice that police and fire categories were at seventy-six and seventy-eight percent respectively. Additionally, the dollar increase includes some of the one-time payments made under the three-two-one plan to accommodate for those. And we've also been experiencing increased costs due to higher activity levels throughout the city as far as programming. So overall, the expenditures are in line with the expectations at this point. An additional expenditure information is included in the report. Also in the report is a little bit of information on the police contract and vacancy and overtime reporting. Essentially, it shows that overtime is being used to offset vacancies under the OCSD contract. And from a net cost standpoint, the OCSD contract is on track for the spending for the entire year. Overall, I'm available if you have any other questions and I can address those.
Thank you. Council?
Oh, thanks. Yes, thanks, Mr. Ron. Thanks for the quarterly presentation tonight. And what is, what is the plan for recessionary factors that we will be facing?
Um, we'll have to see how things go. Overall, though, we do have the emergency reserves available if things are needed. I wouldn't say we're too far along in the recession. We've had the two quarters of negative GDP growth. But overall, those effects have not been felt by the city. And again, property taxes are all essentially, say, one year in arrears. So any impacts to property taxes would be a year down the line. So we do have additional time to plan for any impacts that would be felt from any recessionary impacts.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
Mayor, good job. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate the presentation. So we have, we have our revenues projected to be significantly less than the expenditures. Is that, is that what we planned going in? You, you seem to indicate that, but I don't remember the general fund.
Yeah.
Got that, that much sort of underwater.
So, so at this point, what typically happens is revenues, the property taxes come in primarily, or a large portion comes in in April. And then also we have our year-end accruals that need to occur. So we're basically booking activity because for transient occupancy tax, those taxes are collected prior to June thirtieth, but we don't receive those funds until after June thirtieth. So we still have to, I'll call it, move some of those revenues back into the correct fiscal year. Expenditures are a little bit more quick to be paid, so they show up a little bit quicker.
Okay, so we're on track of where we projected, bottom line.
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ward?
Nope. Thank you for the presentation, Jake.
So Jake, for the benefit of the people who are watching, you, you mentioned three, two, one, and that's an important thing to mention. But let's define what three, two, one is. And then I'm going to follow up with you on where we stand with three, two, one. Thank you.
Okay, so the three, two, one plan was a pension funding strategy that was adopted by council, I believe in October of twenty twenty-one, and it involved making a three million dollar payment on the public safety pension plan, a two million dollar payment on the miscellaneous pension plan, and then setting aside one million dollars for a section one fifteen trust. As far as the three, two, one portion, three million worth of payments have been accomplished prior to fiscal, the close of fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And two million has been set aside in the budget in fiscal year twenty twenty-three to make that payment. And then council in June appropriated one million and we're in the process of basically going through the section one fifteen, but we're trying to accomplish those other payments first because those are definitely more of a priority to get the pensions paid down. And then we would allocate the one million to the one fifteen trust and we would require council input as far as setting up a section one fifteen trust plan.
Explain, explain what a one fifteen trust is, please.
A, a section one fifteen trust is basically where you can set aside money to pay any of the pension liabilities that are out there and it's allowed to be invested slightly more aggressive than, I'll call it, the government code for for non-pension investments. Government code for, I'll call it our pooled investments or our investment pool typically are in lower risk and safety is a priority. With the section one fifteen, it allows a little bit more investment in stocks, bonds, a little bit longer-term assets, which offer higher potential yields.
And if, if we were chasing a straight line and we really aren't based on stock market returns, when are you anticipating that we will have paid down our pension liability to, to a level of about ninety percent?
Again, I would anticipate that to occur by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, but as you're probably aware, CalPERS did have a negative investment return during fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which will offset some of the gains experienced during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We'll provide a little bit more of an update as we get into the long-term financial plan, which is typically done at the, or will be done in the beginning of twenty twenty-three.
Got it. As relates to OCSD, they're getting ready, go into contract negotiations with their unions. And we don't know where that, I think the unions are coming out wanting five percent a year, three years or some, something like that. Are we baking that into, will we be baking that into our budget going forward?
Um, yeah, that would probably be incorporated into the budget forecast as part, or as part of the forecast, which is part of the long-term financial plan, which again is going to come back in twenty twenty-three. Hopefully we'll have a little better information at that time. So we'll be incorporating that into the LTFP and it'll kind of give us a little bit of a perspective and then it would be incorporated into future budgets.
My, my final question for you is going to be, we're having a hard time recruiting particularly at the, at the lower wage levels. You know, we're, we're competing against In-N-Out. We're competing against Starbucks. And, you know, are we, are we going to have to, this is more of an HR question, but I, I, I assume we're going to have to pay higher, higher wages going in, into the future in order to just be competitive at the lower wage scales. Please, thank you.
The MOU dictated that the city conduct a class and comp study in this current fiscal year for all full-time and then we will be doing a class and comp study for all part-time. And so we are anticipating that RFP to be released within the next thirty days to seek a consultant to do that class and comp. And then we would be bringing that back to the council with a recommendation for an award and then the consultant would be off and running. What I would preface is, is that at the end of the day, that will be presented to the council and likely have a price tag as it relates to various amount of positions being adjusted to be in the median range, which the city of San Clemente has historically been within, within their pay structure. So that will be forthcoming.
And I, I'm going to, I'm going to have one la- last comment, not a question. But we're probably two meetings away from being in our appropriate, in our new chambers. And our, our two meetings away, what do you think?
I think our goal is to be in the meeting at the second meeting in September within our new council chambers.
And, and, and those new council chambers were built without any impact on our general fund, just so everyone knows this is money set aside for years that we have now used to build a new council chamber. And we, we also used it to build another fund to build the, the police services station. Ms. Jerome, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
If I could, I, I want to clarify the point on the three, two, one pension reduction. The, the number one, the, the one million trust, I don't think, refresh my memory. I don't think as a council, we've approved that. The one was a, was analysis to, to move forward. We haven't seen any analysis. Is that, what's the status on that?
I'll address that. So the council did approve a three, two, one. And part of that one is the one million dollars that would go into the one fifteen trust. And so as Jake alluded to, once the paydowns have occurred, which are the most important part of the three, two, one plan, then we'll be coming back to council with the recommendation for the council to, I'll say, award a one fifteen trust, which would be administered by a third party. And so you, the council will get that option to deliberate on that in a future meeting.
So it's an option to deliberate. It's not a decision that's been made. That's my recollection.
We're, we're pursuing it as the direction of council. You will have to approve the execution.
Okay, a couple, couple of thoughts on that. Number one, my concern about the trust is that the, the allowing for a more aggressive investment to generate more money for the paydown. My concern is that the, the cost of creating the trust in terms of legal fees may exceed the increased value by the additional investment. I, I'm a little concerned about that ju- just as a concept. And, and at our budget meeting a few months ago, we only had four members present and there was a recommendation to put an additional one million dollars from our general fund toward this, which didn't pass on a, on a majority vote. And it was suggested that we just hold off again for a while. And I wonder if that issue.
Can we agendaize that particularly thing?
I would like to, I would like to do that if that's appropriate because we didn't have a full council and I, I think the outcome may have been possibly potentially different had we had a full council present.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion. Can we have a third?
I'll, I will be the third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh. Mayor, can you remind me what the vote was on that when it was brought up before? You, you said that we didn't have a full council.
Two, two.
It was two, two. Thank you.
Please.
I may, thank you, Mayor James. For the city attorney, I know, could you follow up with, with the city attorney, Scott Smith? He had promised to look up an article. I, I'd come across an article on the one fifteen trusts and it was written by a lawyer at BBK and I, I didn't, I didn't write the name down of the person, but it was, it was interesting. And it was prior to the council voting. It was a four-to-one vote. I didn't vote to support the one fifteen trust concept, the three, two, one. But if you could, just because he didn't get that to us. And I know it was from BBK.
It was a, uh, article authored by a BBK lawyer?
Yes, your lawyers, including probably yourself, have written articles, educational type articles. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from Mr. Ron? Okay, Jake, you're off the hook.
All right, thank you.
City clerk.
Yes. Next item is an update on the homeless issue for May, June, and July. And I do have a few speaker cards. First one will be Donna Vedrine, followed by Kathy Espahani, followed by Pastor Julie Patton.
Public health and safety in San Clemente has not been addressed by this council in May, in June, or in July at council meetings with our homeless. in June, or in July at council meetings with our homeless population. Not one word from the dais, our elected representatives, to give direction to city staff and leadership on providing housing for those living on the streets and open spaces without access to bathrooms or shelter. This is your responsibility as our elected leaders. Let me propose a call to action to you to discuss tonight. Provide direction to city manager and city staff. Give direction to staff to work on our, to work with our local homeless collaborative on mobile shower pilot program, and bring back to council for discussion and vote. Give direction to staff to work with our local homeless collaborative on safe parking program, and bring back to council for discussion and vote. Lease the former city hall excess vacant city land at 100 Avanita Presidio to create emergency housing. This site is adequate for a safe parking program. This site has bathrooms. This site has office space for case management and professional services to include outpatient, mental health, and addiction programs. San Clemente must create housing for residents without homes. Emergency housing, affordable housing, and supportive housing. Meanwhile, San Clemente leadership must change the way it treats people experiencing homelessness. Stop making life harder for those living on the street. Where is the leadership? Failure to take responsibility has exasperated the problem. Our county supervisors and local government, you, our city council members, must remain focused on local issues. Take steps to solve the homeless crisis while supporting and enhancing public safety for everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Espahani with the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. I feel it's good every now and then for you to be reminded that there really are many things San Clemente can do to address its homelessness crisis. I say crisis because I suspect you agree that having more than 80 human beings hunkering down on our city's streets or in dirt fields every night because they have no safe, safe place to sleep is a crisis indeed. Our Affordable Housing Coalition has often written and spoken to you about the concrete steps that this council can take to reduce homelessness, like facilitating the conversion of a local motel into permanent supportive housing, or partnering with a neighboring city to open an emergency shelter, just like Costa Mesa and its neighbor Newport Beach did last year, or donating a piece of the city's surplus property as a site for a very low-income affordable housing development. We've also urged you to adopt short-term solutions that can ease the suffering of unhoused people, like providing a safe camping area, mobile showers like Donna just mentioned, phone charging stations, and easily accessible storage for personal belongings. But tonight, I humbly ask you to do something immediately to demonstrate San Clemente is committed to treating its homeless residents with compassion and dignity. I ask the city to stop harassing a 55-year-old homeless woman with multiple health problems who sleeps in a corner of North Beach parking lot, close to where I live. For purposes of this special plea, I'll call her Kay, the first initial of her given name, to protect her privacy. Kay is well-known to the city's code enforcement officers and deputy sheriffs because they keep giving her citations for keeping her personal property with her where she sleeps. Kay has been homeless in North Beach for quite a while. Since early July, she has been cited multiple times for what is essentially camping violations. Most worryingly, she has received four misdemeanor citations for maintenance of property in a manner that constitutes a public nuisance. The nuisance, it's the sight of her cot and her wagon, and a few bags of her personal things. The last weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, the city seemed to up its game, issuing two administrative citations against Kay. The first one imposed $100 fine immediately. The second, the next day, that was Sunday, imposed a $200 fine, and both citations noted that it would cost $500 for a hearing on these citations. This is a homeless person with nowhere to go. She, one day, she actually paid $15 in the parking meter so that she could feel that she could remain there safely.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Pastor Julie Patton. Okay, that's all.
Good. So there were like six people who did not make, uh, public comment one. There's more cards in that. Um, I would like to accommodate those that were here for public comment ones at, at this time, if, if.
Well, we still have the homeless up here.
Oh, we still have the home, I'm sorry, thank you for catching that. Sorry, I was trying to cut you off, Adam. Never mind.
Not a problem, sir. So I, uh, again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Adam Otamian, Deputy Community Development Director. I'm joined tonight by Carly Hunter, our community outreach worker. Uh, I will go over the, uh, the outreach reports for the last three months. And, uh, I, I apologize, it's, um, due to the, uh, council meetings, this, this update has been, uh, pushed back, so I will, uh, try to give a, a general overview of, of the last few months, uh, and then we will, uh, field any questions from the council, should there be any. So, uh, we are in the middle of, uh, the summer, and that's typically sees an uptick in the number of, uh, uh, new people, uh, coming to town, and those, uh, that, that's reflected in our numbers here. So our number of outreach contacts, um, are, uh, in the, in the 240s, uh, which is a, a little bit higher than, uh, some of the, uh, previous months. The number of unduplicated individuals contacted, that one, that number has continued to rise. Um, and, and from those individuals contacted, we'll see, uh, we'll see how some of the other, uh, factors, um, or, or results from those, uh, that increase of people, uh, uh, results in, in, or is displayed in this report. We, in addition to the number of, of people that are, uh, that we're, uh, dealing with, uh, we are getting a higher number of calls or inquiries, uh, that Carly is responding to. Uh, that number has, has jumped by about 10, uh, just since May, uh, from 52 to 63. The number of street exits, uh, that continues to, to vary, and that's based on, uh, resources and what's available, uh, to help people, um, um, get off of the street. Um, and then the last thing I will, uh, bring your attention to is the, uh, just the number of new arrivals. Uh, for the last two months, we've had, uh, nine unduplicated contacts, uh, made, uh, within the city. So with that, uh, I will, uh, turn it back over to the council. Like I said, Carly Hunter is here. We're, uh, happy to answer any questions you have.
Cut, yes, please.
Just one quick question at the top of that, uh, chart, if you could move that down to the very top, the, uh, the number of, uh, outreach contacts, 243 for the month of July, and the number of unduplicated individuals, 65. How many of the total number of outreach contacts are duplicated? Is, if you had the 65 people contacted four times each, that'd be about 240. Is, about, what's the, what's the, the number for duplicated contacts for the total number of outreach? Are you talking to same people, or are there a lot of different people?
I'm talking mostly to the same people. And then, um, people I have case managers, case management with, I usually meet once to twice a week. Um, so that would mean they've been met twice a week. Um, sometimes I can see the same five people and meet with them five days a week. Um, I can lose a couple people and not see people, you know, it just depends on where I'm at and where the hotspots are at, and who's around, and where I can who I need to.
Okay, thank you, that, I appreciate the explanation. With the summer, summertime, uh, it's easy to be on the beach and be outside. Uh, the numbers are increasing during the summer of July, so we have a peak. Do you expect it to go down in August and September? Has that been the pattern historically?
Yes. Summertime is, is always, all beach cities. Um, everybody wants to be outside, it is historically.
Back down to that, that normal level, which I, I understand historically has been around 42, 43 people. Do you expect to come, come, uh, fall time that those same 43 people here will remain here, or have you noticed them moving on, or what, do you see much change there?
Well, I think our locals stay a little bit longer, the people that are new arrivals are easier to move along and move into shelter, they're more willing. So it's just a lot of different.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Um, what is the status in this might be for the city manager? What's the status of the recruitment for the second, um, outreach coordinator?
In about two months, on the job.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for that. And also, um, again, for the city manager, a resident, uh, had shared, and I conveyed this to you, um, Mr. Sund, that it would be nice to, uh, provide more visibility to the outreach coordinators to have perhaps, uh, the title on the back of a nice shirt for the city, as, you know, in addition to the logo, of course, in front, a- as the park rangers have, so you can clearly see it, it identifies them when they're out and about. Um, did you, uh, what, what do you have to say about that city manager? I wanted to.
Current uniform that Carly wears is sufficient.
Okay, so, uh, so the folks that are experiencing homelessness, they can find you quite easily just by your badge you're wearing, as opposed to having to have your title on the back like the park rangers? It's working, excuse me, excuse me, please, city manager, no, please, no. So, excuse me, city, okay, city manager, I, I really don't appreciate you interrupting me when I'm, I'm trying to communicate to the speakers. So, no, it's, it's, you're, you're out of, out of line, okay? So you do it many times, and I just don't appreciate it. I'm glad it'll soon be over. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor James.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one quick question, uh, and this is for Carly. What, what is the biggest impediment to in- increasing the street exits? Is it lack of places for people to go? Is it their lack of willingness to go to available places, or what, what would you? Because we have seen a lot of consternation from our residents, rightly so, about the increase in the homeless, particularly in North Beach in the summer, and that very much concerns all of us, so we're always looking for how we can boost up that street exit number.
Good question. That's one, Duncan, um. It is, it is affordable, lack of affordable housing.
Carly, could you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Uh, lack of affordable housing would be number one. Um, I would say we have people out there with vouchers that can't get into housing. Uh, because it's that people out there don't want to rent out right now to unhoused individuals, that they have to have a credit check, they have to have a background check, they have to uh, pay three times the rent, they'd be able to, they have to be able to show they can pay that. Um, unless they have a big agency that backs them, and they'll say, hey, we will pay that, we will, we will pay this now, we can pay that. It's hard to get somebody into a place. That's why I try to link everybody to different agencies so that they can get the financial backing.
Right.
You know, that's why we try to go into shelter first, and then into housing.
Okay, thank you. How many people do you put in shelter that we find return to the streets of San Clemente? What percentage that you place?
I actually just saw a percentage today, and it was lower than I think most cities, so I was pretty happy about, and I think it was, uh, 14% in the last year, and I think everybody else was more in the 30s, so, um.
Why are you having success, oh, you know? Why are you having success versus those are in, in the 30s?
I'm just using my resources, which happen to be a lot of the agencies that I've worked closely with for many, many years, so um, I just try to do what I can as quick as possible and have people out on the street as little as possible.
And then what percentage of, of contacts do you have? Even when you have someplace for them to go, they are unwilling to, to go into permanent supportive housing?
Um, I couldn't give you that percentage to be.
More than half?
I think that if, if more, if half people were offered housing in San Clemente, all half would take it. I think it's, it's, uh, it's the, it's the locals that grew up here that want to live here and can't find housing here. So, but for most part, if we can offer somebody, I just had a longtime client that had, has grown up in San Clemente and just take a, a place in Lake Forest. Because he was done being on the street and was willing to say yes to Lake Forest when that six months ago was an absolute no. So it has taken me a year and three months to get him into a place, and it finally happened, so it just, you know, some people are easier, some people, it just takes them a little bit longer.
Very good. Carly, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carly.
Thank you. Thank you.
City Clerk.
Yes, you had mentioned doing oral communications, but we're about two minutes away from the time set for a public hearing.
Okay, then we're not going to be able to do it.
We, we still have, uh, the consent calendar just.
Right, I know.
Oh. Okay, I thought it was 7:30. I'm told the, uh, public hearing is 7:45.
Okay, so we'll.
Go ahead and do it.
Just the ones that were here.
Yeah.
For public communication, one.
Okay, uh, so the speakers will be Catherine Dobrin, Chuck, Amanda Q, uh, third speaker declined to give name, George Gregory. Do those three first. So Catherine is first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members for your time tonight. My name is Catherine, and I followed the livestream about a week and a half ago of the very raucous, rowdy meeting that was over an agenda item, and that's what brought me here tonight. If you would please be patient with me, I'm a retired educator after 40 years in that vocation. And I'd like to talk, if I may, about the image of a bookshelf in a library. It's called a moral issues bookshelf, and each of the issues you deal with as city council members would be the books on the shelf. So the biggest question, and I've heard all of you talk about it, is one of priority. How do you decide the order of importance of the books on the shelf? Can we ever say anything is always right or always wrong? Are there objective truths always and everywhere true for every single person? For example, we would never be neutral or nonjudgmental about murder, and our society certainly judges it as a serious crime. We know that the book that defines when life begins is in the science section of the library, because it is science that verifies human life begins at conception. That's an affirmative. Where does this book, then, that I'm talking about, about protecting the dignity of innocent human life from conception onward, where does that book go? This book does not belong on the shelf at all. It is more accurate to say that the book of protecting innocent human life at every age is actually the shelf itself. And therefore, it holds all the other books, all the other issues up. It's the foundation. So in doing this, I'm trying to give an understanding for those who don't see from the, the position of someone who is pro-life. A pro-life position is the shelf upon which all moral issues stand, and it guides our understanding of all of them. It is not a single issue at all. I get, I get very annoyed when people lump pro-life voters as, oh, you're all single-issue voters. It's not that at all, it's the total opposite. It's a broad view, it's a wide-ranging view. It's the foundation under which society operates, and as I listen tonight, when I hear the concerns of the people with the shooting in the park, the concerns of the people over the homeless, all of these issues will rise and get support when there's a proper understanding of the foundation. will rise and get support when there's a proper understanding of the foundational issue, which is respect for the sanctity of life from the moment of conception. Thank you.
Hello, council members. I had a presentation which I was late on. I had some computer problems today. But I've changed my my comments for a couple of times tonight. For the last two weeks, I've been reaching out to OCTA representatives. Mr. Daryl Johnson, OCTA CEO and other representatives to one, to extend the deadline for people to submit their public comments for the scoping period, which ended yesterday at 5:00 P. M. And also to have a town hall meeting, and the purpose was because having basically been speaking about transportation and fighting against the toll road for, what, five years or how many years it's been? I was really concerned about the OCTA meeting, and there were certain things that should have been there, certain illustrations, certain maps that were at the April, I think nineteenth, city council meeting that didn't that weren't available there. And then also, there was a map which included a project as labeled as project, the project location vicinity map. And so I was concerned about that. And fortunately, I had three teleconference meetings with OCTA representatives. And luckily, my attorney was present because there was a lot of concerns regarding information going back and forth that were stated at the OC, at the OT, OCT, OCTA scoping meeting and which which was quite different from our teleconference communication. So and the reason why I say that, I think, is that I think we they really could have done a little bit a better job and having a certain map available. And and as a result, they did change and they put a disclaimer on the bottom on my request, and that issue was raised that they should have. Unfortunately, in that disclaimer, they did not put updated information and the date because anybody would know that they already had given this notification, this map from the beginning. But bottom line, I think we do need a town hall meeting. I think there was only from when I spoke to Joel Slotnick, there were only fifty-five to sixty people that attended the public scoping meeting at San Clemente High School and thirty who had a teleconference meeting. So ninety percent, I mean, ninety people in a population close to what, sixty-five thousand? And I think that isn't really good. But according to the OCTA, it was a good turnout. I I put in, I put together a petition really quick, and we've got a hundred twenty-one signatures. Thank you.
After the anonymous speaker will be George Gregory, followed by Susan Ambrose, followed by Donna.
March first, two thousand twenty-two, council instructed the city to submit the five park master plan updates by May first. Before Mr. Sun departs us, would you please find out what he's done with the five park master plan updates? There's a lot of concerned citizens. Also, I don't know if it's just me, but I receive council agendas as a staff is walking out the door on Friday evening. Basically, five thirty-one P. M. is when I get them. If there's a topic I need information on, no one responds to my emails, voicemails that are left Monday and Tuesday. Such was the case this week with Mr. Krieger. Or better yet, I am told by staff that the only way to get an answer is to submit a public request, public record request. What a farce. Has anyone ever received an answer within twenty-four hours to a public records request? A scheme as defined by the Oxford Dictionary is a large-scale systematic plan or arrangement for attaining a particular effect or putting a particular item into effect. I believe this format is allowing this to happen. You're getting only staff information. The public does not have time to verify its accuracy or its bias. Thank you.
George Gregory. George is not here. Okay, Susan Ambrose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed city council. I'm here tonight to talk about Maxburg Park. I live around that area. In fact, my home faces the street I live on faces the soccer court and the playground of Los Palmas School. Consequently, I spend a lot of time outside because I do a lot of gardening in my yard, et cetera. Early in the morning, when I take a walk, I, it's probably not a morning that doesn't go by that there's not broken alcohol bottles on the sidewalk right next to the school, the fence of the playground. There's either people who have gotten, who have vomited on the sidewalk, there's clothes out on the sidewalk. There's all kinds. In fact, the driveway there for dropping off things and getting things at school there is turned into a kind of a trash pit that people just leave things. That's the same place where there's the book deposit, so you can grab a book and get a new one. So I'm calling your attention to this because I'm calling everybody's attention to this, to pay attention what is going on in your neighborhood. A lot of times you may not, you might walk by, just walk by and think, oh, the kids are at fault here. Now, this is this is the fallout from Maxburg Park. I happened to be walking through that park that very day that the shots were fired. I guess I got through there maybe twenty minutes prior or half an hour prior to the incident happening. And I could tell when I walked across the park that it was completely a different scene than what I see usually when I walk across that park. Because everybody was in black, nobody was talking, there was no music playing, there were no cards being played, there was no discussion whatsoever. I've never been in Maxburg Park where it was deadly quiet, and there's no pun intended with that comment. When I got to the corner over there near the church, I noticed a gentleman on the street who was looked like he was strolling his child. And as it turned out, he was doing those those swerves that you make in the road that you frequently see police cars do on the freeway when they want to slow down traffic and keep cars from moving any faster or going into a section. That's what he was doing with his buggy with his two boys sleeping in that stroller. It was very, at first I thought he was just putting his boys to sleep, and I gave him the thumbs up, thinking, oh, they're sleeping now. But he gave me a very stern look back, which actually got my attention quickly, and I quickly went on my way. I'm just saying that we all need to be diligent about reporting things. I did call the police, but probably maybe fifteen minutes earlier had I called, I don't know that that would have made a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Donna.
The Inflation Reduction Act will deliver real change for San Clemente. The Inflation Reduction Act will deliver real change for our families, our environment and economy. Here's what made it into the final bill, making prescription drugs more affordable. This bill removes an illegal legal prohibition that has long prevented Medicare from negotiating lower drug prices, which has driven them sky high. It will also penalize drug companies that raise prices faster than the rate of inflation and place a cap on Medicare recipients' out-of-pocket premium drug costs at two thousand dollars a year. It is estimated that the government will raise three hundred billion by reining in drug prices. The Inflation Reduction Act will extend subsidies for people who buy their own insurance. The bill lowers healthcare premiums by extending financial assistance for ACA plans under the American Rescue Plan for three years. It is estimated that nine million Americans would have been paying significantly higher premiums and more than three million people would have become uninsured altogether without this provision. Taking decisive act on the climate crisis, invest three hundred and seventy billion into energy and climate, which will allow the U. S. To lower greenhouse gas emissions by forty percent. An incredibly meaning step in combating climate change. Making sure corporations pay their fair share of fifteen percent corporate profits minimum tax. So wealthy corporations don't get away with paying zero in federal income taxes on billions of dollars in profits. It's estimated that this tax will raise about four hundred and fifty million dollars and reduce the deficit. The reflection of the Inflation Reduction Act was signed into law today. And it was passed by our government, by both the Senate and Congress. So I applaud what this act, what this bill will bring to our city, our residents who live in San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it. We're three minutes away from the public hearing.
Mayor, can we have three minutes? We have a three-minute break.
So.
Did you turn in an oral communications card for the five P. M. Session? Because they just finished the five P. M., not for the second session. Yeah, I think you came at six, right? Came after six.
Okay.
I think you're in the second session for oral communications.
So.
Mayor, I just have a couple.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Follow-ups, just the first one, Ms. Continua was talking about, we could have a town hall. Is there an appetite to have a town hall?
I was going hearing item ten, whatever it is.
Transportation update.
I was going to make make that. So if you want.
And I think we should keep it.
Yeah, let's do it then.
Yeah. Just let the mayor speak, Kathleen. And then secondly, thank you, Ms. Ms. Resident, I don't know if there was a name given. City manager, any of the, you know, when those five-site specific plans be coming back to us? Because it was March when they were tabled for a couple of months, I think it was.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mic issues. So the council did approve an environmental consulting agreement for Steve Park, which is one of the five parks that was directed to be expedited. So we're currently having a consultant do the environmental for Steve Park as we expedite that part per the council's direction. The other four will be addressed in in the future. I don't have a timeline on that at this point because we don't have money to do those improvements at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think that takes us to seven forty-five.
Mayor, I asked if we could have a quick break before we go into that. We've been in session since five.
We did have a quick break.
We went into closed session and then we walked straight back into here.
It's a couple of minutes, five, five minutes, five, as long as it's five-minute break, five-minute break.
We just needed a break.
Okay, five minutes. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, City Clerk.
Item eight A, the public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is to consider establishing a processing fee for urban lot split and two-unit project application. I do not seem to have any cards.
Of course, okay. We'll open the public hearing?
Yes.
And no cards?
No card.
Not even the athlete?
I bet he should speak on this item.
Good evening. There there is no applicant for this item, but Sarah, our senior planner, will be giving a presentation.
That's what was confusing me. I saw someone walking back and forth. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry about the confusion. Uh, my name is Sarah Toma. I'm a senior planner with the planning division. Um, again, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, my presentation today is for the council to consider establishing a processing fee for urban lot split and two unit project application. Um, with Senate Bill nine becoming effective January first, twenty twenty, uh, that required cities to process S B nine applications through a ministerial process approval of housing developments with no more than two primary units in a single family zone and the subdivision of a parcel in a single family zone into two parcels or both. Um, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance number one, seven, two, three in December of twenty twenty-one. Um, per the urgency ordinance, the council may adopt a resolution establishing an application fee to recover the permit processing costs. Um, so staff provided, uh, fee analysis, which was attached to the staff of agenda. Um, that shows a breakdown of staff's time processing the application and the costs associated with it. Um, that would establish an application fee of four thousand, four hundred, twenty-one and ten cents. Uh, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, establishing a fee for processing of urban lot split and two unit application under S B nine. Um, also finding action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. That and staff's recommendation available for any question.
Counsel?
Okay. So, uh, I have a question. I've asked this before because I don't like to surprise staff at city council meetings. Um, S B nine. I am under the understanding that only a property owner that had lived in that property, lived in the property, not just owned it, but lived there, could do a lot split and build two homes or an additional house on that. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct. Part of the requirements, there is a list of them in the urgency ordinance. Um, that states that, um, a property owner has to live on that property as well as they do take advantage of the S B nine. Um, they would have to stay, um, the, the property would have to be their main principal property for the next three years.
Right. At, before they have to be a proper.
They have to be a proper.
After.
Correct.
Okay, so the council already approved that in our urgency ordinance that we did a few months ago.
Yes, that is correct. This is only to, um, uh, have the council adopt a processing fee.
Right. I just want to make sure, how do we, the city of San Clemente staff, verify that someone is the owner three years before? And what happens to them if they leave it before three years after?
Yes, that's, that's an excellent question. So part of the application process when they submit, they have to show, um, a proof of principal residency and that could be a utility bill. Um, you know, things of those, of those documents. And then, um, we have been discussing the possibility as well for, if an, if a property owner does take advantage of S B nine, um, that's could also be part of our track it upgrade, which is to do an annual reporting and for, um, property owners who do have S B nine on file, we would request that they submit some proof that this was their main principal home.
For the period of time?
For the three, correct, yes, for the three year.
Okay, I think it's going to take more than a utility bill.
Yes, I.
Do that. Okay.
Any other?
I just, that's all I wanted to know is how?
Yes.
Cause I get concerned when we start permitting, you know, a lot split and we're doing a fee. So I understand the limits on this.
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel?
Question, within the, within the existing budget, uh, are, is s- staff able to process the, uh, these permits currently? Are they being processed currently?
That's an excellent question. Um, for the time I've been with the city, I started in February. Um, I've had multiple property owners reach out and we have discussed it, but no official application have actually been submitted.
Thank you.
Any other counsel, any other counsel?
Just to clarify, the cost, this, this, this amount of, this fee would cover the, the staff time to process an application if one did come in?
Yes, it would actually cover both, uh, planning division and public works because it's a two-part review process. One, where the planning division takes in the application or the community development department would take in the application and process it and goes through all that kind of project management. And then there's another component where public works, they takes it through a, um, a tentative parcel map. Uh, because everything has to be ministerial. There's no planning commission. There's no city council approval. Um, so that takes account both, uh, fees.
Right, okay. Uh, not a big fan of the, the state mandated, uh, laws here on, on development. But since that is the law, I think we should have, uh, and I, I guess we are permitted to account for the costs that we take in doing that ministerial approval. So I think it, uh, makes sense to, uh, to take in those expenses. Thank you.
Of course. Do you like a motion?
I would like a, I'd love a motion.
I will move that we adopt resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-four entitled the resolution of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, establishing, establishing a permit fee for processing urban lot split and two unit project application under Senate Bill S B nine and finding the action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act sequel.
Second.
Motion by Ward, second.
Just for the record, you did open and close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to speak to the motion.
Yes.
If I could. I, I'm not in favor of the motion. I, I think local government has an obligation to do its job. Uh, and our job is oftentimes driven by local ordinances and by state statutes. I, I don't know that every time we take on a new task that we need to document the, the minutes, portions of, portions of hours and say, we're going to pass that cost on to the public. We talk about the cost of housing and the expensive housing. And, and a primary function of the expensive housing is the regulations that relate to it and the fees that relate to it. And with this, we're adding a forty-four hundred dollar fee for every applicant. I, I'm opposed to that and, uh, it, it can be argued, yeah, well, they're dividing the property. They're making more money. Uh, our job is not to value how much money people make and assess them for it, but to do our job. And I think there's been no testimony that, that our job is being impaired or that our staff is being impaired. And, uh, I'm just opposed to the, the fee, so I can't support the motion.
Uh, city manager, would, would you, city manager, would you say that that is a, a forty-four hundred dollars is a fair, um, amount of money as it relates to staff time?
So the, the calculation, so a government agency can only do cost recovery. We can't profit from the applicants or from the citizens. And so, uh, this is not an easy process as, uh, the senior planner Sarah Toma in, uh, indicated. It's multiple disciplines, both public works and C D. And so, uh, I stand behind the forty-four hundred dollar fee that's proposed from you. Um, I appreciate council member Knoblock's comments, but, um, you know, before this law was passed, staff didn't have to do this. Now that this law is passed, staff has to do it in addition to all of their other regular responsibilities. And we, we talk about this on a regular basis in terms of permit times being improved and so forth. But we're not adding staff to that. So, uh, I think this cost recovery fee recommendation is appropriate.
Any other?
I, I could make a comment that, that the city councils in prior and it's, it's actually city policy that we do recover our costs. And the reason we do that is anytime somebody does some type of a, um, uh, construction project, it is not right for the rest of the citizens of San Clemente to pay, uh, and subsidize their development. So that's why we, we do this. That's, it's a policy already that we're following.
Well, the, the policy was implemented by the state and the state should be paying these fees, but they're not. And, and the question is, do we pass it on? Do we pass it on to our citizens? And I'm saying, I, we have the staff to prepare it. We can prepare it. It's within our budget. It's one of our functions. Uh, unpleasant, though it is, uh, we're stuck with this. I, I, I appreciate the comments that were made, but I, I can't support.
Yeah, uh, you know, S B nine, I think is a terrible law. S B nine is imposing state control onto, in, into our city. Um, I'm, I'm going to be able to support forty-four hundred dollars for this. So with that, a motion by Ward, a second, I believe, by Mayor Pro Tem Duncan. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Um, three, two with, uh, Ferguson, no block, uh, saying no.
Thank you, staff.
Well done, Sarah.
So moving to consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal of items C and E.
Can you say it again, C?
C and E.
Cat and Edward.
Yeah.
Correct.
Um, I have F. As in Frank.
Yeah. I'm gonna do H. Within hotel, so, uh, city clerk, I read that as C, E, F, and H.
Correct.
I move the balance, prove the balance.
Second. Motion by, motion by no block, second by Mayor Pro Tem, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, so item C, that's the warrant register and that was pulled by Brad.
I don't see him.
Brad's not here.
I'll move item C. Um, I'm raising my hand. Yeah, I'd like to speak to it. I actually, um, thank you so much, Mayor. I actually, uh, went through the warrant register, um, as well, uh, in going through my agenda report. And, um, I'm not going to be able to support the first three of the four warrant registers because, um, I just have so many questions about the B B K costs. And the first top three warrant registers under B B K. I don't need to go through all of them. I'll have to get with Scott when he returns, wherever he is. But they total about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for about five. The dates seem to correspond to about five weeks of work. So, I mean, that's more than, um, some, many families make it a year. So I'm not going to support those three warrant registers, uh, personally. I just, these costs are just a runaway train. Um, but I'll hold that for when we do vote on the warrant register. Thank you.
Which items were those three?
The first three of four warrant registers, just under the B B K items. I just have so many questions about the items and, and, um, don't even know what some of these are, like, I don't know, Ms. Elizabeth. I don't know if, if you could tell me what public U T complex is. It's very expensive.
Uh, A, I would always encourage the council that they can email us at any point in time prior to the council meeting to find out the details, so staff would be prepared to discuss those items. That line item you're referring to is public utility. That has to do with best best increase your working with Santa Margarita Water District as it relates to the joint agreement that the council's authorized, uh, for the city to move forward.
Okay, that one, just one line item was like fifteen thousand, nine hundred, fifty-one. There were a couple on that one, but, um, yeah, with the city attorney out, I didn't, uh, get to chat with him about, uh, many of these. Anyway, that said, um, I'm, I'll prepare to, uh, vote on at least one of the four. But not that. It's just way too many, uh, legal costs here tonight. Um, just shocking, actually.
Okay. So can I have a motion to?
Motion to approve the warrant, uh, and payroll register?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Ward, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Two. Vote is three, two with, uh, Ferguson and no block voting no. E.
E is contract award, deed park, sports field lighting replacement project. And, uh, can I know how to make speaker?
I attempted to reach, um, Kyle Krieger, I believe, is the one that proposed this. Um, because I had questions about it, but I couldn't find in his report. And he did not respond to my emails or my phone calls or my request to have Mr. Sun have him contact me. Again, referred to public records request. So I just wanted to find out in his report, when he does bring this to you, I don't know why he isn't. Maybe you could explain that to us. Um, but did he take into consideration the age of the existing lighting at Steve Park and compare it to the lighting at all of the other city parks? Did he also take into consideration the light offspring at Steve Park and compare it to the other city parks? And my biggest concern is that he's asking for almost two million dollars when you actually read his report versus what you're on your agenda there. And does this in any way impact the priority to fund the, the number one priority of the city to fund the four pickleball courts at Steed Park? And since I have a few seconds left, I just want to make a comment that, you know, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, we don't have the right to pick and choose what California laws we want to agree with or endorse or comply with, just like this one. You don't have the right to choose to not comply with California Civil Code three, four, eight, zero. Equal quality of rights for every resident in this town, not subject to the public nuisance of noise from pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to move on item F?
I'll, I'll make a motion to do that. This is, um, this is something that's in our C I P, our, our current budget, and this is the contract to do that.
Uh, item E, I believe.
Yeah, just to work clear.
E, 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 I'm sorry. I, I said.
Oh, I didn't hear what he said. I'm sorry.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion on item E.
Okay.
To staff.
Second.
Motion by Ward, second by no block, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Now we're at F.
And F is an update policy and procedure twelve oh one eleven, city council meeting and operating procedures.
You know what, counsel? I apologize. I pulled the wrong one. I'm sorry, in my haste, so I will move item F. I apologize.
Second.
Motion by Ward, second by no block, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
We just tried with item H, purchase of a standby generator and electrical distribution system for the city hall building at nine, ten to go seal.
Yeah, so I, I pulled this. I have some questions in regards to this, because this is, you know, it's, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will be money well spent, but I do think council needs to have some oversight on, on the, the urgency power generator. Uh, I'd like, is Mr. Kober here?
Uh, Kyle is on. He's having camera difficulties, but I believe, uh, Kyle, can you hear us so we can hear you?
Yes, can you hear me?
We have got audio, so Kyle's here.
Okay, so my first question is going to be, counsel, you have any questions before I, I continue? My first question, uh, why diesel fuel and, and not natural gas?
Uh, Mayor James, we had a feasibility study to look at that, uh, very issue, whether we should use diesel or natural gas. The consultant felt that natural gas wouldn't be the best alternative because you'd have to have a, basically a pipeline run to it. And in case of a earthquake or, you know, some kind of sudden movement, it could snap a line. And we really, we basically want a, uh, totally independent, fully functioning system. Also, the, uh, natural gas is a much larger generator and I believe it's more expensive. So for the area that, uh, the footprint that it'll be taking at city hall, they just felt like a diesel was, uh, just the better way to go.
Yep, that all makes sense to me. Um, and with the Caterpillar company, are, are we going to, is it Caterpillar we're, we're contracting with here?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we're going to have an ongoing maintenance program with them?
I'm not sure that they'll actually provide the maintenance, but, um, there are companies that do regular generator maintenance.
All right, um, I'm, I'll move item H. Oh, no, we, we, we're going to build a structure for it as well?
It should be just a concrete slab in the, in the parking lot there at, at city hall. And the generator should be set right on top of it.
Okay, is it going to be secured in any way?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So I'll move item H, uh, so motion to approve and authorize public works directed to the engineer to execute contracts. See twenty-two dash forty-nine, purchase order of Caterpillar Incorporated providing for a standby generator and related distribution systems in accordance with the Sourcewell National Purchasing Cooperative Agreement, contract number one, two, zero, six, one, seven, dash, C A T, in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand.
Second.
Motion by James, second by Mayor Pro Tem, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to new business. A report from the institution city manager concerning updates on legislative and transportation activities. And I do have a speaker card when you're ready.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want to take public comments first and then we can, uh, begin the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Amanda Q.
Hi, hello, council members. Um, I, I had an opportunity. I'm glad that, uh, I saw Rhonda Riordan today and. Hi, hello, council members. Um, I, I had an opportunity. I'm glad that, uh, I saw Rhonda Riordan today and, but, um, I, I'm concerned about, um, what was stated at the, one of the city council meetings regarding the Senator Bates Bill one two, two, one, two, two, four. And basically this bill is for watersheds, wildlife habitat counties of Orange and San Diego. And basically in summary, it says the Wildlife Conservation Law of nineteen forty-seven establishes the Wildlife Conservation Board in the Department of Fish and Wildlife and requires the board to determine the areas in the state that are most essential and suitable for certain wildlife-related purposes. Under the law, the board may authorize the department to acquire real property rights in real property, water or water rights for the benefit of wildlife. The bill would authorize the Wildlife Conserv- Conservation Board upon an appropriation by restoration or combination thereof in watersheds with habitats for insensitive wildlife populations in specified regions in the counties of Orange and San Diego as provided. And the reason why I read that is because at the city council meeting, I think there was, um, I think a discussion whether this was going to protect toll roads. And so it did speak with their legislate, Senator Bates legislative staff and it basically she just confirmed what it was and and it's not really, doesn't protect toll roads, but, um, so I just wanted to, you know, emphasize that. And as far as, um, going back to the town hall meeting, I'm, I'm very appreciative of, uh, Mary, Mayor Jean James for, uh, you know, reading all my emails and, um, and been talking to me on the phone, uh, regarding, uh, an extension and, and having a town hall meeting. And I'm glad that I reached out to, uh, gosh, the, you know, a lot of researchers, Vani and Tom Barnes and, uh, those of the, you know, the grassroots, not my toll road groups because we were concerned about what we heard. But thank you so much and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no more cards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jennifer Savage, Assistant to the City Manager. Uh, this evening you have an update on both the legislative advocacy activities as well as the transportation advocacy activities. We have both of our consultants on with us this evening. This report is largely about the activities that occurred between March and May. The item was continued a couple of times. However, there are some updates uh, to date of legislative activities as well. And I will turn it over to Mark Apria, our legislative advocate, and Stan Oftaly is also online with us for transportation advocacy activity updates, should you have any questions?
Welcome, gentlemen.
Mister Mayor, uh, members of the city council and staff, Mark Apria with Apria and McHale. Uh, it's a pleasure and a privilege to be before you, uh, this evening. I think before we get into any of the particular legislative items, uh, let me just set the table as to where we are in the legislative session. Uh, number one, on a weekly basis, Jennifer Savage and I, uh, meet regularly on legislative and budget matters and providing her an update as well as she providing me an update on any matters, uh, going on at the city council that should influence or determine what kind of measures we should be paying attention to. We review, uh, not only the highlights that are before you, uh, this evening, but we also review the, uh, bill, uh, the bill file, which includes about seventy-eight bills that we're monitoring in one form or another on behalf of the city. As we talked about, uh, the last time, uh, there are a number of items that, uh, have been prioritized and we'll go through those. Let me just sort of, uh, lay out where we are on the legislative calendar. Uh, so, uh, this evening we are, uh, August sixteen, beginning yesterday is floor session only between now and August thirty, thirty-one. There will be some policy committee hearings if a bill is amended and requiring a policy committee hearing because those amendments were significant or substantial. Any amendments on the Senate, uh, or Assembly floor will have to occur on or before August twenty-five and August thirty-one is the last day. The governor then has until September thirty to sign or veto or allow bills simply to pass into law. Uh, we have submitted to you an updated report that indicates those priority items and I'm happy to go through not only those, but any items in the bill file. Let me start off with the wildlife conserv- conservation grant legislation. As you all may recall, uh, Senator Bates and her staff developed Senate Bill twelve, twenty-four, and they requested thirty-seven million dollars in appropriations uh, for that measure. As we reported previously, the, uh, uh, exact dollar amount was struck in the Senate Appropriations Committee. This measure is now on the Assembly floor and is eligible for a vote um, uh, on Thursday or anytime thereafter. We anticipate that this measure will be taken up and approved. Uh, there, I just want to note that there has not been a single, uh, no vote, uh, on this measure uh, and that it has from time to time been on a consent calendar. This, of course, intersects with the state budget. And as you know, the state budget was adopted, uh, the first time on June thirteen. There were still many items to be worked out and then finally on June thirty, uh, other details were, were addressed as well as the adoption of a number of budget trailer bills, twenty-seven to be exact. And then there are still twenty-one billion dollars in general appropriations for climate action that Senator Bates, a group of environmental groups, uh, uh, as a coalition of environmental groups and the city of San Clemente are advocating for funding for the Wildlife Conservation Board specific to the purposes outlined in Senate Bill twelve, twenty-four. Uh, I know we are getting very close to when those budget trailer bills will be adopted before August thirty-first. And, um, I can tell you that, uh, while we do not yet have a, uh, a line item, uh, promised, uh, we have had discussions, uh, with the administration, with the legislature on Senate Bill twelve, twenty-four as well as adopting, uh, some form of funding for SB twelve, twenty-four. Uh, but we do not yet have any agreement, uh, on that. Let me ask you, Jennifer, do you want me to, uh, invite questions on an item by item basis or go through my report and then, uh, uh, take questions then?
You're welcome. Welcome to finish your report. Thank you.
Okay, very good. The other item, uh, is a, a, is a priority one item, AB, uh, two, zero, one, one, dealing with affordable housing consistent with the, uh, efforts of Senate Bill nine. This, uh, seek, this measure seeks to, uh, allow a developer by right to develop housing on industrial property, uh, and also to avoid, uh, the need for sequo. Uh, this is designed again for increasing housing. The city of San Clemente, along with a number of others, have, uh, have opposed this measure. There is a companion measure by Senator Caballero, SB six, that seeks to take a different approach. AB nineteen oh nine, uh, this is a measure that the city council has discussed in the past. Uh, it, uh, provides greater latitude to, uh, or I should say, it, it provides a, a great deal of, uh, discretion on, as a matter of state policy on the use of e-bikes, uh, throughout the state. There were some amendments recently taken that authorized the Department of Parks and Recreation to prohibit the operation of e-bikes on paths or trails within the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. This measure is on the Senate third reading file, uh, and again, I anticipate it will be taken up, uh, sometime before now in August thirty-one. AB nineteen forty-six by Assembly Member Borner Horvath, uh, provides, uh, that the California Highway Patrol, uh, develop, uh, safety and training programs for the users of e-bikes. Uh, this is a measure that the city of San Clemente is supporting, uh, and that measure, I'm happy to say, was signed by the governor on Monday of this week. Finally, ACR one, one, six, the California Surfing Day Resolution, Assembly Concurrent Resolution one, one, six, passed out of the, uh, Assembly on a unanimous vote. Uh, there are, uh, nearly all the members of the Assembly are co-authors of that measure and it is now before the Senate Rules Committee. Finally, I did identify in our report ballot measures that are, um, making their way potentially to the November twenty, twenty-four ballot. I will point out one ballot measure that I know was of great interest to the city council and that was a measure being sponsored by the California Business Roundtable, which limits the authority of state and local government to impose new or increase existing taxes. I know there was concern expressed by members of the city council and staff and we, uh, we are keeping, uh, a close watch on the progress of that and, uh, will report to you, uh, periodically as that comes up. So let me stop there. I think, uh, uh, I'll take any questions from, uh, Mister Mayor or any member of the.
Yeah, I, 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 I will start off with the questions, uh, in regards to SB twelve, twenty-four. I think that's one that has most interest for, for this council. Uh, it's passed through the Appropriations Committee.
Yeah.
Um, what about, what's going to be the process of funding it now that it's passed through appropriations?
All right, as you, as you'll recall, the, but the, the bill says upon appropriation of the legislature. So, uh, in order for the funding that's specified in twelve, twenty-four, this legislature would have to fund it to either thirty-seven million or some other amount uh, in order for that money to be earmarked for that project. Um, we have seen in the past that measures are adopted in one year and funded in a subsequent year. I can personally attest that we've been involved in those kinds of efforts. Now, if there is no funding this year, I will point out that the Wildlife Conservation Board previously received about two hundred and fifty million dollars of funding. There are groups and organizations, uh, that are urging that that be increased. Whether increased or not, the city of San Clemente, as well as others, could band together and apply for those dollars for the purposes specified in Senate Bill twelve, twenty-four.
Pass it. Counsel, Mr. No Block? Ms. Ferguson?
Questions. Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
I have one quick question for you, Mister Apria. On, uh, on AB nineteen zero nine Friedman's bill, it says that, uh, it's going to prohibit us, uh, stopping a class-three bike on any bike path or trail, bike way, the question trail, but then it gives us, I think you said through our Parks and Rec Department.
Uh, no ma'am, that's the State Parks and Recs Department.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, because I, I wrote that down thinking that's not how I read it. Okay, so that was the, the other part. Um, so it does say that we would be able to prohibit any operation of electric bike on anything that is a recreational trail. Do we need to know the definition of a recreational trail or is the city of San Clemente able to designate what is a recreational trail in our system?
I believe you would have the ability to determine what that is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
Thanks, Mark. Nice job.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's, that's all we have, Mark. You, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Mister Apria.
And is Stan going to give a presentation as well?
Yes.
Tell me what your desire is, Mr. Apria.
You want a brief overview of just CTA as it relates to the scoping process?
Exact, exactly.
So Stan, a brief, uh, overview of the OCTA scoping process as it relates to the I-five HOV, uh, project?
Well, the, um, yes, sir, the, um, interstate widening from, uh, San, the San Diego County line to, uh, Avenue to Pico. I had two, um, two hearings, one in person at San Clemente High School and one that was, uh, uh, by, by a zoomer like this, this method. The project stayed to two HOV lanes. It's to, there is concern, two of the existing four lanes. Um, the end's a big cost. It's gonna be a, even though they don't estimate a, a full cost at this time. Um, we can tell you it'll be about fifty million dollars, this project paid for by the state of California and measure M funds. Right now, the six point five million dollars with design environmental work is ongoing. As part of the ongoing environmental work, these scoping meetings are heard, are held to have discussion with the, with local agencies and with local citizens to see what their concerns would be if the project goes forward. It's probably, it's part of the environmental and design program. At the end of, later in the process, when there are specific projects or specific elements of the, uh, of the project to be approved or considered in final action, there'll be additional public hearings. But the scoping hearings are designed to find out, what do you want to do? What does the project look like? In the, on this particular one, the, the cost and the reason it's going to be about a fifty million dollar project is that some bridges are going to have to be, uh, redone. As you widen the freeway and add additional lanes, you have to widen the bridges, the length of the bridges to be able to deal with it. Additionally, on this project, there's a, uh, a significant, uh, interest in the, uh, Concordia Road, uh, Con- Concordia pedestrian over crossing along the I-five. And the concerns on the Concordia over crossing are it doesn't meet, uh, existing ADA standards. Very difficult to deal with and doesn't have the appropriate, uh, size for bicycles. So that'll be a significant, uh, issue and that was brought up in the, uh, in the scoping process. It'll be the elements of part of the environmental document that's been put together. It's a long process. I don't think you'll see a, a final program on this for, uh, uh, sometime next, maybe a year from now, maybe a little shorter. It'll take about a year to get the environmental and design projects in place. If funding's available, and I think it will be under measure M and with the, some support from the state of California, this is a project that'd go forward about twenty, thirty. The actual construction would take place at that time. Between now and then, you'll do your, the various environmental and design issues have to be resolved. The questions that we're talking about that are raised early are the ones that get the greatest amount of attention. In all these major projects, particularly major freeway projects like this, we know there's some things that are going to be raised that are, uh, involved in every single major project. How loud will it be? What will the noise be? How long would, how long will we have to endure construction on a major area? Are we concerned that both elements of it, that is, the, the eastern and western elements of that project will hook up correctly? That is, we have a full system or just one stretch of highway? Uh, those are all legitimate issues and those are the kind of things we're discussing the scoping meetings.
Dan?
Yeah, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? So, uh, the City Manager, I'm going to have a motion, um, that we do schedule a town hall and purpose that town hall to, it's, it, and I think Stan will agree with this, it's premature to talk about what that project's going to look like, because they don't know what's going to look like. But there's so much uncertainty and concern in this community about what the project looks like. There's nothing worse. There's nothing worse than, than the unknown. And I think what OCTA owes to us, uh, what we owe to, to the community is a, is a town hall um, that we do in the next thirty days. Um, when you have, you know, they had a town hall in August. It's hard to get any of July or August, whatever it was, but, um, it's hard to get people's attention during the, the summer and I think we need to look at a, uh, town hall in the middle of September. And, uh, it needs to be via Zoom and in person right, right here. Uh, I'd like to have OCTA with us. And it's appropriate. Uh, Stan would be a, a, a great resource as well. Uh, so that's my motion for, for a, um, for a town hall, uh, mid-September. Can I get a second, anyone?
For, for purposes of discussion, I'll second it.
Yeah.
But I have a question. Stan, I guess the question would be for you. A town hall meeting would be beneficial if we knew, if this, if the CTA and Caltrans knew what, what they were going to do, to have a, to have another meeting when we don't know, we, we don't know what, 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 uh,
what what they were going to do to have a to have another meeting when we don't know what we don't know what 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 imminent domain issues are are going to be in play. And that's the big one. And so let me ask the question of Stan if I could.
Yeah, if I could respond to how what I'm thinking and and then you Stan can respond. My 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 thoughts are we don't understand what the process is. This is a town hall to introduce our people to to what the process is going to be so they understand of the, you know, the the environmental impact report and all that.
I I agree with that. I but my question for Stan is when will anybody know precisely what land is necessary to be taken to accomplish the goal of adding a carpool lane? Is that?
But they'll know about about eight months from now, maybe a year.
It'll be it'll be eight months to a year before we can identify what portions need to be widened and what 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 piece of land needs to be taken?
Yes, because you have to figure that they often have to look at how much land will be taken to to rebuild bridges. And it's the bridges over the freeway that are a big cost and time time consuming issues here. They have to look to see what other they may be right away takes at the end of a bridge.
Thank you. And that's the important issue that I want to know. I have no problem with meeting for.
And 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 just so so the audience and and counsel knows. So yesterday, as as the Transportation Subcommittee, uh, Councilmember Ward and I sent a note to a a letter to OCTA talking about we will we will be we will oppose any imminent domain. We will oppose any widening of the current paved paved surface. And um OCTA is is looking at from respect the perspective of right away. We're looking at and right away is significantly wider than the paved surface paved surface. And so Councilmember Ward, what else did we say in there?
Um, we said, you know, per our agreement for the cooperative agreement that we signed, that we support uh Caltrans and OCTA looking their efforts to look into completing the carpool lane, but that we expect it to be on the current width of the freeway essentially. So I would ask, um, we just did that letter very quickly yesterday. If that could be maybe on our our website, I don't want it under the toll road. I just, uh, yeah, just like current events or whatever, get it in the queue to where if somebody put it in and typed in OCTA that maybe it would come up. But that letter was also that was letter was actually sent to Caltrans with a copy to OCTA.
Exactly. Yes.
Couple of concerns. Uh, was the letter on City Council letterhead with all of our names and the city manager's name? Okay, so you used your name and Ms. Ward's name?
I did.
Okay, perfect. And we haven't received a copy. City Manager, can you make sure the council receives a copy of this letter that went out from two council members, please? So we're in the know.
Well, it's not two council members. It's the sub we appointed sub.
Perfect. Could we please have a copy? Thank you.
It's located in your inbox at City Hall.
Oh, it's in my inbox. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jennifer.
Anyone else?
Call for a question?
Uh, I would just ask one quick question. Why within the next thirty days? I I'm I'm just I'm gonna ask staff, I think we have a calendar where we already have some special meetings. Are you expecting the council to be there at this?
No, just the subcommittee. You and me.
So again, we have to.
Yeah, anyone can be there.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm working, I'm worried about meetings that we already have scheduled at staff time.
I think if I may entertain the mayor, I I think thirty to forty five days is reasonable about any conflicts.
Thirty to forty five days, not a problem. Motion by James, is there a second?
Second.
Second by No Block. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Apprea and Mr. Optim.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a report from the city clerk and city attorney concerning enacting local campaign contribution limits and policy regarding contractor disclosure of political contributions.
So I'm I'm going to pull this uh night. Um, we're too far into into the election process right now. Uh, people already raising money and for for us to to impose uh new rules um in the in the midst of the election is not something I think is fair to people who are just now um. However, having said that, we need, there is dirty outside money in in this city. And and we, there are people who have nefarious intentions that who are from LA Newport Beach and you name it, and they have nefarious intentions. And we need to have transparency with that. City Clerk and I earlier today talked about how difficult it would be to use public notes. And I a as she laid it out to me, I agree that that's um is not going to be an effective thing to do, and it all also puts the city clerk's office in in some jeopardy if they don't report it properly. Uh, City Clerk, could you could you go into detail on what we spoke with about earlier today? Thank you.
Yes, I explained the problem. Um, council, well, at least Mayor James had suggested at a previous meeting that the city clerk published in the newspaper contributions that were received by all campaigns. Because the San Clemente Times only publishes once a week on Thursdays. And and they require one week lead um lead in time. That means that by the time something is published, it it's going to be about thirteen days late, which is a long time because it's those last days when I'm receiving the second uh pre-election statement. And also when I'm receiving uh the forms four ninety seven, you might remember those are every time uh that someone receives one thousand dollars or more from a single source, I receive it, they come in fast. So someone looking at the newspaper, they're going to have outdated information. And they're going to have incomplete information because just the contribution uh number does not tell a full story. The FPPC form tells the complete story. For example, someone may receive a contribution for a thousand dollars. How many contributions did they receive before? What is the aggregate amount? What if it's a loan? What are the aggregate loans? Have some been uh repaid? Have some been forgiven? Um, I I was just concerned with with trying to do that because it gives the public outdated and incomplete information.
And I let me restate some, I said dirty money. I should not have said that word should be dark money. That we don't know exactly where that money came from. It could in fact be dirty, but we we I don't know that. Um, I'll give you an example of 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 a of a situation when I reviewed four sixties from the past election. There was a pack that opened up in June of twenty twenty. It closed in January twenty twenty one. It had two donors. It had Sukah Construction had if anyone's familiar with that, that is, that's the construction company that built the two forty one toll road. And a subcontractor. It had two recipients. And to get around the twenty four hour, and I'm not going to name names, I'm not good. But to get around the twenty four hour reporting, it gave a city council candidate here in the city of San Clemente nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. That got around twenty four hour reporting to the city clerk. Nothing illegal, nothing nefarious. However, it probably needs to be. This, the community needs to be aware of this, these sort of uh contributions. And what are these street people trying to to create additionally? We can all day long, we can put all sorts of kind campaign contributions on individual donors. However, we cannot put a campaign limit cut limit on campaign contributions on packs. And so consequently, we could impose these rules of five hundred dollars on our candidates. And there could be this dark money coming into town with all sorts of money hitting our candidates on on negative campaigns or supporting their their opponents. I'm not too sure what the right answer is, and that's why I'm pulling this tonight. But come twenty twenty four, and I'm running in twenty twenty four, so I'll put these rules on myself in twenty twenty four. Um, we need to figure out what an appropriate campaign contribution is going to be at this town. Mr. No Block.
Was that a motion to table this item? I'll second it if that's a motion.
Yes, it 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 wasn't a motion to table it. And but I need some clarifications from the city clerk. City Clerk, one of the things you're going to do is you're going to bring some transparency to these contributions by putting a link on the homepage of the cit- that City Council of the city website. So someone goes on the city website and it'll take them straight to that four sixty, the campaign contribution form.
I suggested that to you in lieu of the publication so that they could always have up to date. And I think that would work well because I agree with you. I know that there's been concerns that it's hard to follow the uh all the campaign forms that are online. We could just do a link from the homepage that just go to the candidates for a certain election and any independent expenditures that have come in. And I think it'd be more user friendly for the public.
Council direction of that, or can you do that unilaterally?
I'd like counsel direction, make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
First, we'll do we'll first we'll do a motion on tabling this. And then we'll do a motion on directing the uh city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if we could do this in reverse order.
Yeah.
Do it in reverse?
Yeah, give the direction of the city clerks first and then table the remainder of the item.
So I have a motion that we direct the city clerk to create a link on the homepage of the city of San Clemente website that goes directly to campaign contribution forms, also known as Form four sixty.
Second?
Second, uh, motion by James, second by No Block. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye, but I want to make a note that that's how it used to be. We used to always have the link on the website in the past, so I'd like to I I support having that return. Thank you.
Passes five oh with enthusiastic support. Okay, so so now uh I'm gonna make a motion. I've already made it. I'll make it again to table this agenda item.
Second?
Uh, motion by James, second by No Block. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is item C. Report from the city attorney concerning the introduction of an ordinance prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters.
Did he go to Big Bear already?
I, no.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have before you an item. Um, it's an ordinance that would prohibit the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in the city. Uh, the intent is to discourage uh this shockingly increasingly common criminal activity, uh, not just in our city here in San Clemente, but a variety of cities. Uh, we're seeing this as an issue. Um, the idea is to assist the city in prohibiting uh the falsification of information in the documents um and records used to verify ownership. And we would suggest that you uh move forward with that item.
Um, council members?
No comment.
No comment.
I'll make a motion.
I'd just like to, if Captain Benfield would would just opine that this is something that would be beneficial to enforcing against this particular type of crime.
Yeah, go ahead. So Tony and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. And he's going to tell us it gives him another tool, an important tool.
Uh, exactly that. It it gives us an option that we don't currently have. Right now, there's nothing that prohibits that. So the event we do make a stop on someone in possession of catalytic converters, even though we may full well believe that they are stolen. Um, there's there's no recourse for that, and we're left with sending them on their very way. So um this at least gives us one option to um get those people into the system and property.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number seventeen thirty three and ordinance of the city of San Clemente adding chapter ten point fifty four unlawful possession of catalytic converter prohibited of Title Ten vehicles and traffic to the San Clemente Municipal Code establishing regulations prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters.
Second.
Motion by No Block, second, but by Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item D, report the Beach, Parks and Recreation Director and the Economic Development Officer concerning the consideration of a future amphitheater site and development of a related citizens committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us this evening. Uh, this was a collaborative effort between myself and Samantha Wiley, our Beaches Parks and Rec Director. And so hopefully both of us can uh tag team any uh questions that may come up. Uh, we did take a a review of this topic, uh, which has come up in the city in the past. Uh, and presented a couple of uh opportunities within this report. Uh, just to highlight a couple of those, uh, one was a review of the history uh of a nonprofit group that sought to enter into a lease with the city for the development of an amphitheater uh near Caix Saluda and Avenue de la Pata. Uh, the city entered into a a lease agreement, um, but put the onus on that nonprofit to develop plans and conduct environmental reviews uh before proceeding with any kind of a project with the city at that location. Uh, unfortunately, that nonprofit was unable to secure sufficient funding to proceed. So after a couple of extensions uh of that lease agreement, uh, that uh project um did die because this the uh final extension did expire. Uh, another uh opportunity uh that's been highlighted is that our Beaches Parks and Rec Division has conducted a master park plan uh updates for specific parks. And one of those parks uh indicated a plan that had an amphitheater style development to it. So I'm not going to say it's an amphitheater, but it had uh a a sloping uh public green area uh with a shelter down towards the beach. Uh, and that's at our Linda Lane Park. Uh, so the final planning and environmental review is not uh commenced for that park. Uh, but that was an area that was raised and uh of interest to community members as well. Our Parks and Rec Division did host some summer events at that location that were well attended. Uh, and even though there's not a a significant amount of parking available at that location, it is a short uh walk and accessible from the beach trail. Uh, and so we did see great attendance at those events, which uh was highlighted in this report as well as an opportunity for the council to consider uh on that front. Uh, so that's all that I have at this point, uh, unless Samantha has anything else and and would love to turn it over to the council for discussion.
Samantha?
I have nothing further. I am happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Councilmember?
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor James. Um, well, I I'm pleased to see this on the agenda. I know we've had packed agendas and we've had to and agendize this. I think this is the third time that I'm happy to see us discuss this. And thank you, uh, staff for the uh the agenda report and providing the history on this. Um, I'd love to see us have an amphitheater in town. I um I would love to see an outdoors one for the performances. I go to um the plays at the high school and I love the plays and they're outside of the upper campus in the parking lot. Think it'd be great to see the kids be able to perform in a in a setting uh where they don't have to rent stages, lighting and all the equipment, et cetera. Um, for performances, for public speeches, for just about anything to bring the community together and and bring joy to our community in another way in one of our um parks and spaces that we have that are public for people. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Jerry Velasco because he in two thousand and one, I believe, um, was uh the initial one to uh present this idea for an amphitheater. He's a resident, still lives here and uh was an entertainer for many years. So um, that said, um, I'd love to see us tonight talk about uh the formation of a committee so that the committee can remain um autonomous and innovative, right? And and look around for uh sponsors and help with funding for something like this and make it a real uh community-wide effort that even if council decides to um designate uh specific people that they have public meetings because I think that the community would really embrace this. Um, all the group staff, thank you for listing all these various groups. Um, excellent uh list um of people that have expertise and and interest in the performing arts um in our community. And I want to note that um an idea would be uh to possibly, as far as a nonprofit, in the event this committee that's formed uh wants to seek donations rather than it be publicly funded by the city, which is like uh Laura, could you please, Ms. Campanolo, show the. which is like, Laura, could you please, Ms. Campanello, show the slide? Laguna Nigal has a real beautiful, I think, a real great template for an amphitheater that I would love to show to the public just as an idea, rather than just seeing my face talk about this. But it really gives a good visual of what a wonderful amenity this would be to be added to the community. But the Beaches Parks and Rec Foundation has a nonprofit set up. I haven't talked to them, but because the committee, I believe, should really, you know, take this and and run with it if the council votes to support that. But we've had other fundraising efforts in town and and they've been very supportive of having their nonprofit be the recipient of donations. And they're already accustomed for a couple of decades now of doing their own fundraising for wonderful activities, programs in which they donate their funds to the cities, including the summer, the beach concerts are just one of their many wonderful programs that they sponsor. Laura, were you able to pull that up? Oh, thank you so much. And then I'll just turn it over to council once we show this beautiful picture of an amphitheater. Concept.
While he's pulling it up, let's have some discussion on on this, on a citizens committee. How would you, how would we appoint this? I'm not against it, but what are the logistics? What are the mechanics here?
Well, this list that staff provided is very great suggestion. When I initially suggested it, I thought that each council member can appoint somebody who has an interest in the performing arts. And this list, again, is wonderful. Maybe if that is the route the council majority chooses to go, that they can liaison and pull in these groups and meet with them for their expertise and input as well. And eventually they'll come back to council, the committee, and make the recommendations. You'll see in this report, it outlines the things that they would want to look at before making, you know, their final recommendation.
Is something we need to do interviews for?
We could do that or we could just make appointments as well if everybody has someone that would like to be a part of a committee as a council. So we all have equal representation on the committee. But I definitely love this idea of having them liaison and meet with the list that staff provided, like Chamber of Commerce, San Clemente High School Drama Department, Cabrillo Playhouse, local performing arts studios like the Ballet Academy. I think there would be a lot of interest.
Ward, you have a pained look on your face. So let's talk about it.
I do because of of time for the city, for the council, for staff, for our committees, for all of that. There's, that's Laguna Nigal. So that it's nice, it's a it's a park. It looks very much like what is in our master plan for Linda Lane Park. That is already a well-attended concert venue. And I happen to know that the high school already does a concert on the beach, which they love to do. It's very beloved to do. But I think there's something like this at Linda Lane Park would be more than adequate for it. I was on the council when we approved the general plan and there was a nonprofit that was trying to do something on La Pata. And we said, you know, go and try to figure out if something can happen and we'll entertain this. It's not a definite for sure that this property is outlined for an amphitheater. We got, with this being brought up, we got letters from the high school drama department and that performing arts, that ballet, encouraging our city to build a performing arts center. And I would tell you that there is, even with donations, if there is not a performing, yeah, I think the high school should be doing a performing arts center. And they've tried to do it in a ballot measure and the residents of the city voted it down. So I didn't agree with that, but that's what happened.
But what we're gonna talk about this evening?
Is just the committee. And and I think for time, I think right now is not the right time to be doing a committee. Councilmember Ferguson and I are going off council. And I would hesitate to to start a committee right now. I think if this comes up again and Linda Lane doesn't work out, that we should look at it. But we are circumventing Beaches Parks and Rec and all of our our procedures that we do with parks. And I just think this is going to be a huge amount of time and I'm not ready to appoint a committee now.
If not now, when?
When it it might come up again and maybe the next council would think it's it's new. But I think we shouldn't circumvent the Beaches Parks and Rec master plan. And we already don't have time or money for that. So if this this people want to donate to that and and start that plan up, that would be a good thing to do. The city of San Clemente will always take donations.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the citizens committee going out and taking the temperature of the community on on that. I would see this as zero public dollars involved.
I'm talking time, that that's money. Staff time is is money. And right now, we're losing our city manager. I just think this is just not a good time. I'm willing to not put any committees up or anything until I get off council. It's just something we should do for time management.
Mr. Noblock?
I think the the concept would be fantastic and wonderful community amenity, which would be well-used by a number of organizations in town. I'd like to see something of this happen regarding timing. You know, one of my favorite proverbs is if you if you consider the wind, you'll never sow. If you consider the clouds, you'll never reap. So I think there's probably, this is not, this probably isn't appropriate time. We have a couple of council members who won't be on the council next year. I may not be on the council next year. But the process, I think the the concept is valid, is valid, it's important, and it would be a wonderful amenity for our community. So I support the concept of a committee moving forward.
Mayor Ferguson?
Yeah, it's insensitive to Councilmember Ward's comments there with staff time for sure. But I do think it's a good idea. I commend Councilmember Ferguson for initiating it. And I know that there's a lot of interest in the community, particularly at the high school and getting something going and exploring it. And frankly, this has to be a community-led effort. But we can provide leadership in helping to sort of organize the committee. Then it's up to them to generate funding and a plan. But I think we should start the ball rolling because if, again, if we don't start it now, we're just kicking the can down the road. There's a great interest in this. It's not sustainable to keep having these productions up on the upper campus there. They deserve a legitimate spot. I don't think actually the Laguna Nigal model or the Linda Lane model would be sufficient to do the type of productions that they should be doing. I hope they look at something bigger, actually. But I think we can provide leadership in helping get the committee going and then it's up to the citizens to take it from there. So I think we should move this forward tonight.
Can I ask for one clarification?
Yeah.
Is Jonathan Lightfoot, is this property that we were talking about, the prior lot that we were looking at, area for an amphitheater, does that have anything to do with the the city getting a hospital? If a provider wanted to come to San Clemente on La Pata?
Speak to that. So this was a site that the healthcare committee did consider as a possible hospital and emergency room when we were looking for operators to operate in the city of San Clemente. This was one of the sites that was, I'll say, offered up in our portfolio as a potential development location for a hospital in the emergency.
So council, I will talk to that. Putting anything there and starting to look at that is killing our city ever getting a local provider for an ER and a hospital. And I would I would submit that this is being brought up to circumvent that and prevent us from doing that. I will not vote for that. I will not vote and the council should not do that either. Quickly, I mean, we just decide we're not, we're not, we're not getting provider and bam, let's do an amphitheater.
No, I.
No, that is the wrong thing to do for the residents of San Clemente.
Not my motivation at all.
I'm submitting that is the reason that this is being brought up. I can tell you that right now.
So let's let's stay on task.
That is on task. It is my job to be a council member for the city of San Clemente, to represent the residents. That is why this is coming up. And I am I am telling you that you should not vote for this committee to look at this property. That's why I asked for it to be clarified.
We're not looking at any particular piece.
You are, you are initiating a committee to look at that.
We're, but we're not authorizing the use or encouraging the use of any piece of property. It could be the it could be the meadows in 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 Vista Olmos Park. It could be Linda Lane. It could be the slope behind the high school. It could be a number of.
I would say that there is no other piece of property this city has built out. And that's why we reserve this for.
The last thing I'll say about it is, you know, we live in a capitalist society and there's supply and demand. And when we look at at the possibility of a hospital in San Clemente, it simply doesn't pencil it out. It might pencil out for a socialist, but it doesn't pencil out for a capitalist.
But if we do it, we will be ruling it out. And that's where I say foul, 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 foul.
I make a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you. I thank you so much, Mayor James. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff recommendation that the city council establish a citizens committee to further analyze the feasibility of an amphitheater. And that would entail the city council each recommending a member to serve on the committee and liaison with this great list of organizations that staff provided.
I second.
Thank you. Very disappointing.
A motion by by Councilmember Ferguson, second by Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Thank you.
Four one with Councilmember Ward opposed.
Mayor, as a point of clarification, if I may, just to make sure that we completely understand the action. So what I'm what I'm gonna propose, just in terms of next steps to manage expectations with the council is the clerk at a future council meeting will agendize a process for you, the council, to submit your names to the clerk's office post that council meeting. And then we'll have a second meeting that then addresses the appointments of that citizens committee. So is that on task with what the motion and the action is?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, if I may, though, please make sure that comes back for the next meeting, September sixth, I believe.
That's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Do you need it by then?
I don't, but if that's the will of the council, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Hey, item E is a report from the deputy community development director concerning the use of unmanned aviation systems or drones to inspect open space areas.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Adam Otamia, Deputy Community Development Director. This item is being brought back to you. It was originally directed for staff to start up a drone inspection program of open space areas to identify flammable items so that staff could remove those. Since that meeting, staff has been investigating this type of inspection program. And based on the way that the code-compliant staff would be utilizing drones, it was, it has been determined that the better option for us, instead of having code staff operate, purchase, operate drones, obtain all of the technology necessary to run this kind of program. We would recommend that we contract with with groups, right? Such as OC Public Works, that do this specifically. They have a lot of experience. And we, in discussing how this type of inspection program would work, their 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 expertise or a similar group to them would be be much more beneficial, having an experienced operator to assist code staff in identifying areas where there are flammable items, providing that information to staff and then having our code staff go and actually retrieve those items. So at this time, staff recommendation is for the council to direct staff to engage the services of qualified drone operator to provide drone inspection services. And with that, I'll conclude my report and answer any questions.
Yeah, this is a an important function and a small amount of money, but it's not budgeted. Is there any issue, Mr. City Manager, with the budgeting this, these funds?
I think, A, we would have to come back to the council with an execute an agreement. And at that point, if we need additional funding, we'll ask for an appropriation.
I'm ready to support the motion, listen to the comments.
Yeah, this is not the intent of my motion initially. The intent of my motion initially was for the park rangers or for code or someone internally within the city to be able to launch a drone. A drone is fifteen hundred dollars. A high-end drone is fifteen hundred dollars. I don't think it'd take that long for for your staff to learn how to use it. And that would cut out a lot of doing it ourselves, I think, would reduce your budget considerably and also be more effective and more efficient for your park ranger to just launch, you know, if you have concern about an area, to launch a drone. Because I'll give you one example. Marblehead, as a result of vacant camps outside Marblehead, the Marblehead HOA have spent in the past ninety days something like sixty thousand dollars repairing the damage they did. Now, if we'd had a drone on a regular basis going through that area, the Marblehead HOA would not have incurred all these costs. So I'm not comfortable with with this and I'll probably vote against it because I don't think it's going to, and I proposed it. I don't think it's going to get us to where we need to be.
What begs the question is, what can staff do to actually provide that service?
It's so, this is a tough one because we don't have the staff resources to manage an in-house drone program. And our park rangers work for a limited salary with a limited scope. Adding that duty would definitely facilitate having to revisit their pay structure. Our code compliance division, we currently have a vacancy with, you know, we have two vacancies, a code technician and a code compliance officer. And right now, we have one code officer that's on medical leave till October. So I understand and I completely respect where the mayor's coming from, but we just don't have the resources to manage that. If the council wanted to give us direction to do that, we'll definitely follow. But it would probably mean we might have to hire somebody else and it would take longer for us to employ.
Is there licensing requirements for someone operating a drone?
Yes, FAA requirements.
How, is that a, is that a expensive fee?
You have to go through a program, you have to be certified by the FAA, and then you have to get reinstated, like there's a.
It's not online.
Yeah, it seems to me that that if I was a park ranger and we had an opportunity to operate drones, I'd be excited about wanting to operate that myself. So I don't know if it was available, it would be difficult to get someone to do it.
I understand where you're coming from. Staff's recommendation, the park rangers already have a full portfolio of unlocking restrooms, opening, closing restrooms and dealing with homeless. To add the drone program into it, I want to be just clear to the council, I'll have to hire more staff. I can't do it with my existing portfolio. We're probably talking less than thirty thousand dollars a year for the county of Orange to do two monthly drone patrols. And if we needed to do an emergency patrol, we would use our lifeguards for that emergency because they're constantly looking for FAA training.
It seems to me if the if the ranger's function is to deal with the homeless issue, this is just another tool in their toolbox to investigate and pursue.
Right.
I like, I like the concept. And in terms of efficacy, I think if our people that are responsible for homeless and enforcement have the drone in their possession, it's going to be a lot more effective than going to the county under contract. The county guy comes out, flies the drone and, you know, maybe we get the report immediately. Maybe it's delayed and the response isn't, his job's not homeless, since his job's flying the drone. So it seems to me a staff would be a much better synergistic approach. But there is a cost function that I think is an important function.
It is. And how is marine safety? How many are marine safety are trained with the drone operations? Because they've been using drones for lifesaving efforts for probably seven, eight, nine years now.
I believe it's only the MSOs that have the certification to fly the drones. We only have three MSOs.
Okay. And did new staff need to be hired to do that or were there existing staff?
If, so again, I just want to back up. It's our recommendation to contract it out. If the council wants to give us direction, we will come back at a later date, probably thirty to sixty days at best. And we'll give you a proposal of what it would cost to do it in-house.
Okay.
I want to preface, it will be considerably more than what you're deliberating on tonight.
Could you please answer my question? When we brought in the drones, marine safety, did we have to hire new staff or were existing staff trained?
We got one drone dedicated or not dedicated, donated by the Lifeguard Foundation. And the three MSOs became trained on using that during.
Okay, existing staff.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
This isn't what I believe you initially talked about, but staff is trying to bring something back. But we need to listen when staff says they don't have enough people to do something and and let them contract out if it's the will for us to do that. There are other things. There are other things that we can do to help the HOAs. There's a grant, there was a grant that I don't know, I think it was from the state that the city could apply for and these HOAs could get reimbursed partially for it. I don't know, somebody's spending, spending $60,000, I don't know if that grant is going to last very long, but you know, the HOAs can contract for this too, in their areas to have drones put up. I don't know if it's incumbent on the city to do it. I certainly don't want them out in the open space, you know, in high fire dangers. But if we think that we have that and staff thinks that every two months, you know, we can look at that and if there's an emergency, we can get them to come. If the county already does this, we should probably look at that. And we're doing what we can to help the people and, and limit the, the costs. But, you know, I'm concerned with the level of how much we are actually giving to the code enforcement from the council that first made code enforcement what it is today. We've added so many things on top of what they do and we're, we're, we have new people and we're trying to get that, that up and going just to implement what we already have. So I would make a motion that we, we direct staff just to, even though by consensus or motion, to just look into contracting it with the county, but come back and tell us what that is, because this is not a budgeted item, as Councilmember Noblock mentioned. We don't have this in our budget. So we need to evaluate.
That's actually, you're making me think and I appreciate that. If the council wanted to see a compromise, we could immediately engage with the county of Orange to get drone services. And as part of, and I'm throwing out ideas, as part of the next budget cycle, we can put in the budget, a fully baked drone program in-house and identify the costs, both from a staffing level perspective and an equipment level perspective as part of that budget process. And we can at least try that program out for the next six, seven months before the next budget cycle, because March will be here before you know it and we'll be starting budget again. And then we can propose as part of the budget, a drone program in-house and learning from the mistakes of contracting with the county to better our program, if that's the will of the council.
Mayor, would you all make that motion to do that?
I'll go with that compromise.
Okay, so I'll second that, if that's your motion.
It is. Motion by James, second by Ward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And an F, consideration of a resolution calling on the California legislature to enhance the confidence of the voting public in election outcomes through improved election processes. About 20 cards.
I mean?
About 20. First speaker will be Robin Ward, followed by Lisa Hazelton, followed by Donna Vadrine.
Good evening. My name is Robin Ward and I'm a 35-year resident of San Clemente. I am a retired teacher from San Clemente High School, where I worked for more than 25 years. I've worked with the RSVP program, that's the volunteer police here. And as you can see, I'm dedicated to and invested in my hometown of San Clemente. I'm deeply disappointed in the city council and its decision to add a voter improvement resolution to its agenda. There is simply no evidence of voter fraud. Those who are claiming that there is are not following evidence, but rather rumor and innuendo. I am also disappointed in the city council members who would support such unfounded nonsense and further this campaign to promote uncertainty in safe, convenient and secure elections. According to the Brennan Center's seminal report on this issue entitled "The Truth About Voter Fraud," most reported incidences of voter fraud are actually traceable to other sources, such as clerical errors or bad data matching practices. The report reviewed elections that had been meticulously studied for voter fraud and found incidence rates of .0003%. Given this tiny incident rate for voter impersonation fraud, it is more likely that an American will be struck by lightning than he will be to impersonate another voter at the polls. These false claims of wrongdoing signal the growing normalization of crying fraud. While such claims may stoke up the base, repeatedly telling voters that the election is rigged and their votes will not count could have a suppressive effect, leading some voters to stay home. This whole notion of fraud and elections is about trying to save face and not about reality, and it risks further eroding trust in elections. Do not pass this ridiculous resolution and get a grip on reality instead of promoting baseless claims. This obviously is not about election integrity, but rather a grandstanding attempt to appeal to a small group of people who don't believe facts.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Lisa and hello, ladies and gentlemen of the San Clemente Council and citizens who are involved actively in their local governments. I've lived in San Clemente for well over 30 years and this is my very first student council meeting. I'm excited to be here to support the adoption of the resolution that is calling on the California legislature to enhance the confidence of the voting public in election outcomes through improved election processes. As it is now, the best we can do is to avoid the envelope by voting in person and going and doing so as soon as possible. When your brave, what your brave proposal is saying is that San Clemente City Council responsibly representing the interest of us, the voters who lawfully elected you by requesting officially that our California legislature adopt these changes, which are undisputably sound. They are number one, we applaud you for identifying that photo ID demonstrating the US citizenship needs to be provided. This is constitutional and it should have never been waived. Your earnest desire for the removal of inactive voters is as acutely necessary as it is commendable. Prohibiting the use of unsupervised ballot drop boxes will be welcomed by your proactive conservatives, proactive constituents. Many of us were already committed to remote surveillance of drop boxes until they are removed. The brilliance of number four, vote by mail ballot chain of custody and voter ID. The, and number five, the automatic post-election audit in a state that has a governor who has made the provision that only by proving fraud in a court of law can it ever even be authorized. That is truly a godsend. We are the proud, we are proud that San Clemente would be the first to pass this resolution. And we would love to take this resolution to other city councils. We would record it on a map, city to city, county to county, and it started in San Clemente, that this is wanted and needed in California. As Samuel Adams, one of our founding fathers, once said, "It does not take a majority to prevail, but rather an irate, tireless minority keen on setting brush fires, brush fires of freedom in the minds of men." Let us be your irate, tireless, tireless minority until the brush fires of freedom can no longer be ignored by the governor of the state. He'd probably just blame it on climate control anyway.
Time is up.
Donna Vadrine, followed by David Haddaf, followed by Louise Herbert.
Good evening, Mayor James and council members. I'm Donna Vadrine, a 20-year resident of San Clemente, a longtime community volunteer, and just to be fully transparent, a candidate for city council in the November 8th election. The right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy. Unfortunately, that right appears to be a threat to politicians who feel vulnerable when more people exercise their right to vote. After the community stood up and demanded an end to the political theater of Councilman Noblock's first attempt to divide San Clemente over a woman's right to control our own reproductive choices, he decides it's a good time to launch this crusade to peddle false voter fraud conspiracies. San Clemente residents are not stupid. We see exactly what you're doing. By trying to delegitimize absentee voting with unproven claims of fraud, you've shown us you care more about dividing our community and eroding public confidence in our elections than in serving the public interest, which is what you were elected to do. It's worth noting that you didn't claim the election results were tainted by fraud when you won your seat two years ago. So why now? Because you're running for reelection and it's a popular dog whistle for attracting voters who buy into such conspiracies. Our nation's founding fathers wrote "A Fair and Just Democracy for All." But let's face it, this ideal was not realized for generations. Imposing new stricter ID requirements for mail-in ballots or in-person voting is just a cheap political trick designed to present or discourage eligible minority voters and others from registering to vote or casting their ballot. Thankfully, our state legislature doesn't take its marching orders from local officials grandstanding for political advantage. I've said it before and I'll say it again, we are better than this. I urge the San Clemente City Council to reject this proposal and instead to create stronger voter education and outreach efforts in our community to encourage every eligible voter in our city to vote. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Dave Haddaf. I've lived 36 years, we're having a little war here, who's lived the longest in San Clemente? The resolution is one that I oppose quite vehemently. The founding fathers, when they wrote the constitution, did say, "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, and from there we derive our powers." But the founding fathers had white men, taxpayers, property owners over age 21 as the only voters. And over 250 years later, we've improved that a little bit. Enslaved people can vote, women can vote, Native Americans can vote. And it's an ongoing process to increase voting participation, not to ask the state to prohibit voting. Now, there's been a lot of talk about fraud in the 2020 election. And I guess there have been a few cases found. The one I remember was the Republican gentleman in Ohio, whose wife died about six weeks before the election. And he decided to take her ballot and vote for Trump so that Trump could win. Well, he won Ohio easily, one vote didn't make any difference. There were about, what, 160 million votes cast nationwide. The, there are certain groups that need help with voting. We don't want to cut them out. People with fractured necks and are never going to get out of bed, but their brains still work. People with strokes who can't get around, but their brain still works. Unfortunate people with muscular dystrophy can't get around, can't even sign their name, but their brain still works. They need help getting their ballots from their bedside to the registrar to be counted. We don't want to preclude their votes. I think drop boxes are a great invention. They're strong steel. I used the one by the golf course over here. I've used it for what, two or three cycles? I have no doubt that, that there's going to be any problem using drop boxes. The entire resolution, which is being presented tonight, to me reeks of Alec. And that's not Alec, one of our friends here in town. Alec is the American Legislative Exchange Council, which turns out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
After Louise Herbert will be Trudy Pedobus. Thank you. And then Dennis Camp, followed by Amanda.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Louise Herbert, a resident of over 39 years. So I think I'm up there now. And I'm also speaking on behalf of Democratic Women of South Orange County and a few good men. Once again, we find ourselves as San Clemente citizens dragged from the important business at hand to respond to yet another ridiculous resolution drafted by a council member bent on making our town the laughing stock of the county, the state and the country. The claims of voter inconsistencies, perceived risks, fraud, lack of ballot chain of custody and voter identity theft are strictly based on factless opinions. The so-called need to strengthen the existing California election process is just another ploy for our citizens and city council members to be, lose sight of the needs of our community. This is a solution in search of a problem. Since there is no evidence of any widespread voter fraud, in fact, Orange County elections are among the most efficient and safe elections in the country. A field trip to the Santa Ana Registrar of Voters might be a good execution for education for those of you who think there is an issue. This is another example by Steve Noblock to distract from the serious issues that are confronting our city today. Councilman Noblock has presented a very thinly veiled attempt to regain some sense of viability for his position on city council and the run for his reelection in November, following his failed attempt in recent weeks to claim San Clemente as a sanctuary for life city. If he and other council members are given free range to go off on such tangents, we will continue down a slippery slope of extreme right-wing politics. The presentation of these resolutions by Noblock have no legal standing in the state of California, but do show our city's citizens his unhinged opinions and baseless thought process. He is unfit to represent San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trudy Pedobus and as of yesterday, I'm a 25-year resident of San Clemente. I'm a businesswoman, a mother to two San Clemente High School graduates and involved as a volunteer in this community all 25 years. How dare you again waste city resources and taxpayer dollars on a resolution such as this, for which there is no evidence of any election fraud here in Orange County or by the Orange County Registrar of Voters? This resolution would do exactly the opposite of what you intended and would suppress voter participation with totally unnecessary procedures. Over all the years in which I have been a voter here in San Clemente, all 25 years, there's been no evidence of voting irregularities, no election fraud, no illegal ballot harvesting. All of the talk of this inaccurate and outdated voter rules is false. I know for a fact that in working with the staff at the Orange County Registrar of Voters over the years and attending their many seminars on their procedures, that nothing of what is said in this resolution is true. Under the leadership of Registrar of Voters Neil Kelly, the Orange County Registrar of Voters has been held up as a model, not only for California, but also throughout the country. Neil Kelly often gave seminars to other counties in California as how, as to how inefficient and accurate a registrar's office should be organized. He's, he was very well-respected throughout the state. Several years ago, when the new voting machines were rolled out here in Orange County, I attended a San Clemente Republican Women's Meeting where Neil Kelly was the keynote speaker. After this very detailed presentation, one of the members asked Mr. Kelly, "How many illegal aliens vote?" His response was very politely, "Ma'am, no illegal aliens vote in Orange County as they cannot register to vote." they cannot register to vote in my county, and they do not come anywhere near a government agency such as this." Here's another example of something that was mentioned in the resolution that has to do with in-person voting. During the last June primary, my husband and I voted with our ballots, but we took them to St. Andrew's Church here in San Clemente. I also had with me my son's completed ballot. He couldn't make it. Since he was not there himself, I took that, had to show my driver's license, and I had to sign my name to his ballot. This resolution's filled with false statements and is simple fear-mongering. Again, the city council members need to abide by the mission of San Clemente to maintain a safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play. Instead of wasting time, taxpayer dollars, you should be concerned with keeping the residents safe on our beach trail, ban motorized bicycles, deal with the homeless crisis, and ensure all you can do to keep the toll road out of our city.
Thank you very much.
Focus on these issues. Thank you.
After Dennis Camp will be Amanda, followed by Sharon August Jones, followed by Derek Cortez.
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, council, I ask you today to vote no on this resolution and to leave election policies to the professionals. Although the title of this resolution sounds like baseball on apple pie, it really dives right into the rights and freedoms of our residents. And for the record, there is no evidence that current election processes have any increased risk of fraud. For the record, I think the United States Post Office would like to have an argument with the writer on whether or not there's a clear chain of custody in the U.S. mail. And tell me, council, what data do you have that we don't have that leads you to believe that an attended mailbox is any more secure than an unattended mailbox? Council members, if you, if you individually want to write to your legislatures, please go ahead, but please do not use your position as an elected official to state your opinions on city letterhead, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. What I would like to see is a resolution that says that no resolution can pass and even be agendized until it comes out that every council member agrees with it, and then it goes to the population of the city for 30 days. Because when these come up, we get 72 hours to look at it, minimum, and then we have to figure out if we like it, understand it, and then we all come out here and tell you how we feel. This is actually getting sort of ridiculous. Council, please stop with these controversial resolutions. I think, I perceive them to be an embarrassment to our city. I ask council to vote no on agenda item 10F. Thank you.
I think Amanda was next. Is she here?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Amanda, and I am in support of the resolution to improve election processes. This resolution will enhance the confidence of the voting public in regards to election outcomes and ensure that government remains both for us and by us. A government by the people and for the people is not possible without election integrity. This resolution will assist in addressing and preventing further election and voter fraud. The common sense components of this resolution such as efficient removal of inactive voters, including the deceased and people who are no longer in the area, removal of unsupervised ballot drops even with surveillance, the addition of post-election audits, and the requirement for voter ID are all essential in securing election integrity. This will increase citizens' confidence in our voting system and help ensure the government remains in its place of limited power and functions only by the consent of the people. The mail-in ballot chain of custody makes it impossible to secure election integrity and prevent widespread election and voter fraud, as we have seen, as the ballots flow through too many hands to properly supervise. This resolution will assist in addressing this clear and obvious threat to our elections. Please support this resolution to fix and secure our voting and vote counting processes. And thank you, Steve Noblock, for both this resolution and the Sanctuary for Life resolution. I encourage a new resolution to support another Sanctuary for Life amended or whatever needs to be done so we can stand up for life. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Dar Cortez. I'm a San Clemente resident. I have a wife, a mother, a licensed clinical social worker, a small business owner, and a community volunteer. I'm back again. We met in the same manner, manner a couple of weeks ago when Mr. James had called the specialty meeting. And first, on behalf of several San Clemente residents who asked me to mention to hold a city council meeting on the same day that Capo Unified School District goes back to school, doesn't promote participation, and you could say that the motive is perhaps exclusive. If the idea is to hear the voices of your community as city council that exudes democracy, then maximize the opportunity for your electors, many of whom are San Clemente mothers, fathers, and guardians, to be a part of the process. This is having a pulse on your electors. I'm here to speak on agenda item F, Mr. Noblock, and with the backing of Mr. James, in this resolution, you mentioned that the processes around elections should be designed to encourage voter participation. What we have in place in San Clemente does encourage voter participation. Research time and time again states that in order to increase voter participation that we have to remove barriers to participation, including voter registration systems and access to mail or absentee ballots, strategies such as permitting mail ballots, accessibility of drop boxes, flexible timeframes, and incentivizing. Same-day registration and online registration can and is shown to increase overall voter turnout. Furthermore, reducing the number of polling locations makes it more difficult for many voters, including our community members with disabilities, our older adult residents, and those in lower socioeconomic demographics. This prevents these groups of our fellow San Clemente family members, friends, neighbors, and residents to reach the polls and generally lowers voter turnout. But here's the real issue with this, Mr. Noblock and Mr. James. You're excluding the entirety of what makes up our town of San Clemente. This approach will decrease the means of voting for several of our residents. Your rhetoric in this arena is baseless, as it's already been proven in courts across this nation that our voting means are lawful and sound. As a San Clemente resident, I do not approve this resolution. Many more of us will be here again to speak on September 6th if this need be.
Sharon August Jones. Is she here? Courtney Morrow, followed by Mark Inmeyer, followed by Linda, followed by Atul Paddy.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Morrow, resident of San Clemente. Honestly, I'm pretty tired. Here we go again. Yet another partisan resolution being proposed by Councilmember Noblock, seconded by Mayor James, that is outside the city's purview. Despite endless investigations into widespread voter fraud, no such, no such claims have been substantiated. This resolution is a distraction from real issues facing our small beach side town. Stop trying to divide our community. Stay in your lane, focus on things you can actually do something about. If you really feel this is an, an issue of personal importance, take it up as a private citizen with the county's registrar. Do not pass this resolution.
Good evening. My name is Mark Inmeyer. I'm a San Clemente resident, born and raised. I teach at San Clemente High School, and I'm a candidate for city council. Today was the first day of school, and I was hoping to come tonight to talk about actual issues that impact San Clemente, such as safety of our young e-bike riders and the expansion of some much-needed bike lanes. But no, instead, councilmembers Steve and Jean, you have moved yet again to try and turn our city into something it's not. Our town is not a partisan political Petri dish. This desire to continually divide our town needs to stop now. That being said, let's look at your actual proposition and take apart why it is so ludicrous to begin with. According to the Associated Press, who did an exhaustive study of six states that Trump claimed he won in 2020, there are a total of 475 instances of voter fraud out of roughly 25 million voters. That is 0.0019%. According to the Journal Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, there is no evidence for systematic voter fraud, even with more people turning to mail-in ballots and voter drop-offs. According to Reuters, U.S. election security officials have said the election was the most secure in American history. In January of this year, the OC Register fact-checked every claim of election fraud in our county and state. Not a single claim had a shred of merit or evidence. I could go on and on with study after study and court case after court case, but we don't have time. If you want some literature on it, I'd be happy to send it your way. So why would council members of a small Spanish village by the sea bring up this resolution that is not in the realm of legislation? In my estimation, there are three reasons, maybe four. One, they have been listening to conspiracy theories for so long that they don't know how to find actual truth. If this is the case, then it shows their incompetence at discerning evidence, and I truly feel sorry for them. It will be hard for them to find truth, and they are unwilling to look at facts. Two, they know that they are wrong and are using this for their own political gain by grandstanding for their base. If this is true, then shame on you for misleading the people. Actions like this do more harm to our democracy and constitution than any external threat. Three, they are trying to suppress minority communities. There is ample evidence that these voter ID laws disproportionately affect minority populations. When you made this, did you think at all about how this would impact our minority, our own minority population? I gather none. If this passes, it will add to the stigma that San Clemente is a racist community. This is not who we are, but is the perception that will, that we will become. All of this needs to stop. For the sake of our town, please stop.
Linda, followed by Atul Paddy, followed by Jerry Colomer, followed by Marjorie Sosa. Linda's not here. It's Atul here. How about Jerry Colomer?
He is not here.
Marjorie Sosa? After Marjorie will be Jack Thorwart, followed by Patty Van Recken.
I don't have very much to add to what a lot of the people have said tonight, but I was just looking at this resolution, and it says, "Whereas faith in our election process is the foundation upon which our republic rests," is number one, "whereas the process, the processes around elections should be designed to encourage voter participation while protecting against election fraud." And it goes on and on, and it says that, "Under current policy, measures such as photo ID are overwhelmingly supported by the public." I don't think that that is true. Whereas California has long struggled to effectively and efficiently remove inactive voters from the voter rolls. I don't think that that is true. A lot of this goes on to say, what goes on is not true. So in summary of all of it, it's an unnecessary resolution. There is no evidence of election fraud in California, in the nation for that matter, of any consequence, as I mentioned, .0003%. This resolution raises unnecessary concerns about a process that works just fine, and it causes division among our citizenry. So I would ask you to vote it down. Thank you.
Jack Thorwart?
I don't think I can match the eloquence of the earlier speakers, but what I would like to do to address the two city council members, and I want to remind you that you were elected to provide leadership for the, for the city, not to benefit your own political agenda, right? You were not elected to take away our voting rights. You were not elected to forward your religious beliefs, and you were not elected to make that a gun sanctuary. The best thing you can do for this community is to submit your resignation and save us the cost of a recall.
Patty Van Recken? Patty will be followed by Mike.
So my name, my name is Patty Van Recken. I am a 30-plus-year resident of San Clemente. But again, as last week, I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Orange Coast. I'm here to oppose the resolution on putting limits on voting in California. But first, I'd like to put, point out that voting security in this camp, in the county is the responsibility of the Registrar of Voters, not the city of San Clemente, and not any specific group or political party here. Anyone concerned about the, about this, you take the opportunity, take a tour of the Registrar of Voters and observe the processes that they use to gather and count votes. I have done that, and so have many of the members of the league here in San Clemente. The league is aware of a nationwide effort to spread distrust in the voting process and by extension, prevent people from voting law, law, lawfully, excuse me. The distrust in voting, along with distrust in media and government, and spreading the 2020 election lies, is a slippery path in ending our nation's democracy. The request in the city council's voting restriction resolution, including requiring everyone to have a specific photo ID, removing inactive voters, prohibiting unsupervised drop boxes, concerned about mail-in ballots, and requiring an election audit are not clear. All these issues have been identified as unsubstantiated rumors, and the facts are listed on the U.S. government's website entitled Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, under the tab Election Security Rumor Versus Reality, and you will find each of those issues listed there and disputed. Again, please address your issues if you have any concerns to the Registrar of Voters here in Orange County. Don't spread rumors or pretend that you're concerned about election security. The league supports informed voters, but the sources of that information must be critical and accurate. Thank you.
Hello, council. I think we just got a pretty good primer in how the left in the United States, in our community in San Clemente, in California perceives this issue. There's nothing wrong with that. I would like to add that some of the opinions made some sense to me, and as I reflected, some didn't really add up. But one thing was never addressed by our friends on the left. I was a Democrat for 30 years. I know the talking points pretty well. And that is that it's not whether there is or isn't fraud. It isn't whether or not this is suppressing voter rights. None of that is the point. It's not that the left is concerned about voter integrity. The point of the whole thing, this measure, is that the people on the right don't feel comfortable with the direction of our voting system, and that San Clemente is around 60-plus percent people on the right. The narrative of most of our citizens, I'm assuming, is that things are heading in the wrong direction, that there might be some fraud, or that this is new and different and nothing that we've had in the past, and we're uncomfortable with it, and we'd like to get it squared away a bit more. Obviously, there is voter fraud from time to time. Obviously, nothing is 100% perfect. It may be an issue in other states. It may be an issue in ours in past elections, and it may be in this coming election. But most of the people on the right, that opinion, that worldview, are uncomfortable with the way things are going. are uncomfortable with the way things are going in our election systems and would like to see them squared away. And that's the real value of this resolution, to let our citizens, the majority who are weary of things, let them know it's okay. We're working on it. We're squaring things away. It's not the concerns that we've heard from our friends on the left. They know that the elections are working great. There isn't a problem at all. But a large number of our populace isn't so sure and are concerned and would like to see things at least moved in a direction that they feel comfortable with. As for suppressing voter rights or being a racist or some of the things I heard right now, it's offensive to me and to most of the people in my community. Don't call me a racist. My wife's from Argentina. My kids are first generation. I grew up in a Spanish-speaking home. Don't use that word, Mr. High School Teacher. That's a lowbrow. It's unfair and it doesn't reflect who we are. Anyway, most people in our town are Republicans and most of them are a little concerned about the direction that our voting rights are going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, how many more cards do we have?
I just the last one.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you, well, the board. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Knoblock, for proposing this. I've had questions about what's been going on with our election system for a while. I'm a resident of San Clemente. My name is Gene. Up until, what, a couple of years ago, I've been voting at a local precinct. And all of a sudden, things have changed so much. We had COVID. It was an excuse to mass mail out ballots. I mean, ballots going everywhere. We have four ballots sent to our home and our kids aren't even there anymore. So it's a massive, it's a massive change and it leads to unaccountable and, as some would specify, lack of chain of custody. Because of all the ballots that are floating around, you can fill them out, put them in, you know? I think it's a good idea to have the voter rolls purged or checked for people that are not deceased. I think all the things that you presented on this are logical and they instill integrity. What's wrong with a voter ID? I mean, what's wrong with ID when you vote? I used to do that. It was no problem. We went to a local precinct. They all knew me. I mean, that was great. I had great confidence.
Speak to council, please. Speak towards the council, please.
All right. Sorry. But I think these are all very logical recommendations. And I propose it, I think, the way we've used, the government has used COVID to make an excuse to mail out all these ballots. People have the right to request an absentee ballot, you know? Anybody that's disabled or whatever, I'm sure they got absentee ballots so they can vote by mail. But I just, I see, again, the huge proliferation of ballots. It just opens up the opportunity if somebody wanted to be nefarious. I think controls on that by auditing and what you proposed are very reasonable and I thank you.
That's it. Council members, you want to start off, Mr. Knoblock?
Since I brought this up, I'll start out. First of all, let me just say a couple of things. Number one, there's nothing more important in our society, in our republic, in our democracy than fair and free and accurate elections. That's paramount. To say that the city council has no right stepping into this issue because it's not our purview. This council, on behalf of 65,000 people, communicate with the state legislature almost every meeting where we agree with a policy, we disagree with a policy, or we think a policy should be changed. Voter integrity is crucial. Voter ID is not a complicated concept. You know, in this society, you can't get on an airplane, a bus, a train. You can't cash a check. You can't make a deposit without proving who you are. And that's a minor thing. You can't cash a $10 check without ID. But we can give the government, which controls all of our lives, all of our resources, all of our money, and we give it to the electorate who doesn't have to give any evidence of anything. To say that voter ID is not a problem is to say that the 20 to 30 million people that are not citizens that have come into this country in 50 states, including California, including Orange County, haven't voted and haven't signed up, you're drinking the Kool-Aid if you think that's the case. It is the case. And to say, to have reasonable restrictions is somehow racist. Or, you know, I love this technique because they use it all the time. As one of our speakers said, the left in our cultural war that we are in today, and there's no question about that, they say leave the election system alone because it benefits us. And the argument isn't that, the argument isn't that driver's ID or IDs are bad. The argument is name-calling. So they say this is a dog whistle for the people that want to have free and fair elections. It's a conspiracy theory for the people that want to have free and fair and accurate elections. It's a deep political, it's a cheap political trick to want to have fair and accurate elections. This is not an important issue. It's the most important issue we face in this nation besides the protection of unborn human beings. And so those opposed, those opposed to it love to have the argument, it's divisive. Well, of course it's divisive. If you believe in life versus death and one side believes in life and one side believes in death, of course it's divisive. If one side says we need free elections and others says, let everybody, let everybody vote because you're hindering freedom if you don't allow someone to vote without having any identification, without any proof that they're legally entitled to vote. That's oppressive. You're hurting people. You're a racist. You're distracting from the real important issue. Nonsense. There's nothing more important than this issue. That's why I brought it up. I didn't bring it up after the fact. I brought it up at the same time as the other resolution. But you know, to say there is no fraud is not accurate. The U.S. Cybersecurity Infrastructure Agency did a review of our electronic voter systems, which our high school candidate teacher didn't mention, where they investigated 16 states, including machines that are used in California. And what did they find? They found that there are nine software vulnerabilities making these systems susceptible to hacking. Now, the other response is, well, where's the lawsuits? Where's the proof of this in a court case? There hasn't been too many, but when you've got, when you've got the cybersecurity agency saying these systems have nine software glitches that allow hacking, do we say, we're not going to do anything to plug the gap? We're not going to put our finger in the dyke. We're just going to let that system continue. My recommendation is a safe, fair election where people vote with a ballot that's identifiable. The people that are legally entitled to vote get a vote. It's not political. It's not cheap political trips. It's not theatrics. It's the essence of our democracy. And to allow it to crumble and to go the way it's going is problematic for this nation. And we will rue the day when the Marxists take over this country by virtue of allowing everyone to come to the ballot box without any security. We will rule the day. So that's why I brought this up and I hope I have some support from my colleagues.
Thanks. Well, I took a few notes while the speaker spoke. Thank you to everyone who shared their views tonight. First, I want to clarify, a speaker had said that he wouldn't like to see a resolution on city letterhead. Resolutions are not on city letterheads. They're just on blank letterhead. I just wanted to mention that. And then secondly, another speaker said we should encourage eligible voters to vote instead of passing resolutions. But I don't see how we can encourage eligible voters to vote. How do we verify they're eligible without a voter ID? But first off, this resolution puts forth really two very practical improvements to our election processes that I think are just very common sense components. So thank you, Councilmember Knoblock, for bringing this forward tonight. I actually think it's very rational in terms of two specific things in particular. The voter ID, for which I just mentioned, to ensure citizens of the U.S. are eligible to vote. For example, I can't go to another country and vote in their elections to determine the outcome of the leadership there. And then secondly, just simply cleaning up the voter rolls, encouraging the state to do this to ensure that they are current and accurate by removing inactive voters. So I had a very wonderful opportunity to work in five vote centers on the election day for 11 days in the statewide primary. And countless people gave us their ID. And it used to be required a long time ago, but I think people forget or some people said they thought they voted for it to require voter ID. So in terms of the clause in this resolution that other measures such as photo voter ID had been left out of current policy despite being overwhelmingly supported by the public, I could attest to at least the five vote centers I was in in three cities that a great number of people wanted to show us their ID. They can. Makes it quicker to look up their information on the iPad. And then secondly, I heard from people, some speakers spoke tonight that they've received ballots for their grown children who no longer live there, that moved away or deceased family members, for instance, or multiple ballots. So I just refer them to the registrar of voters so that they can report that and get that taken care of. But yeah, so those are my points I'd like to make. And again, I respect everybody's opinions and then those are mine. Thank you.
Number four.
There's a reason why city councils don't take up items like this. We have residents sitting in the audience going after each other over a California state election issue that we have no purview on. We have no purview. It's not ethical for us to promise you that we can take up these issues that are not city business. What I heard Councilmember Knoblock say, and these are great words to say, our society, our republic, our democracy, our nation. Those are all great. I think we all love every part of that. I did not hear him say the city of San Clemente because it's not in there. We have a California Secretary of State that is in charge of elections. Every one of us that ran had to go and apply. And believe me, it's a lot of red tape to go through and to fill out all the forms to do that. That's who has overseen of this. The Attorney General prosecutes all crimes in our state. The Department of Justice prosecutes election fraud. I looked it up. They've actually, across our nation, have prosecuted election fraud and actually made people criminal prosecutions. And some of them were elected officials that tried to circumvent election law. That's what they do. We do not do that here. We have listened to an hour of people very upset. I understand both sides. I understand everyone's concerns about identity and all of that. It doesn't belong here at the city of San Clemente. We've spent an hour on it. We should vote this down and we should stop doing resolutions on things that we have no purview to do and question.
The reason that people question the integrity of our elections is because people in positions of authority, starting with our former president and I guess going all the way down here to our city council, use the false narrative that there's voter fraud to cause people to have those questions about our election system. They do that for their own personal ends at the cost of all of us. You know, the largest segment of people are not people who vote as Republicans and people who vote as Democrats. It's people who don't vote at all. We don't have too many people voting. We don't have enough people voting. Measures like this serve to suppress and drive down an already low voter turnout. Let's defeat this tonight and get back to city business that we were elected to do. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. I don't know whether there was voter fraud or not. I assume there is some level of voter fraud. Is it systemic? I haven't read anything to say that voter fraud is systemic across the system. I do know that we have a registrar of voters here in Orange County who's the gold standard in election officials. I know of no allegations of voter fraud in Orange County. Those on my side of the political spectrum want to blame everything but their own failures on losing elections. We've lost elections in California repeatedly. And it's because we don't put up good candidates. It's because we don't work hard enough. Is there voter fraud involved in that? There probably is. But it's not, I don't think it's a huge issue and no one can establish it's a huge issue. No one can even establish it's even existing. But I would have to guess by the number of votes that are counted and there's some abuse there somewhere. I will not support this measure tonight. And it's not because there are cheap, you know, comments made. It's because I arrived here tonight to determine I wasn't going to support this measure. You can go ahead and recall me, sir. Good luck with that. And, you know, you can call names, call people right-wing extremists. Does that really solve anything? Does that bring us together? No, it doesn't. You can attack the former president. Really? He's out of office. Let him go. So I'm not going to vote, but I'm not going to vote for this tonight. But I can't say I was really impressed with a lot I've heard from you all. So with that, I'm going to call for a motion.
I would move that we adopt this resolution and my closing comments on it would be that the registrar of voters does a great job. Secretary of State does a great job. But they don't make the rules. They're not the ones that decide whether or not identification's appropriate or anyone can vote. So with that, I will make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Ferguson.
I would like to make a substitute motion that this item 10F, this resolution be tabled and not considered. Or, no, we should vote no. I'm sorry. We should vote no. You're right. I make a motion that we vote no.
Yeah, let's get some closure on this, Kathy.
We have a motion by Mr. Knoblock. We have a second by Ms. Ferguson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. The substitute gets voted on first.
Oh, she withdrew the substitution.
No.
There was no, I didn't. There was no second.
Okay, I wasn't hearing that. I was hearing, let's get this closure on this. I'm not sure how voting no doesn't get closure on it. I'm willing to take it off the table and kill it. But if you want to vote no on this resolution, that's the other way.
I think that's the better one.
I want to vote no on this resolution.
Okay, so my motion would be to vote no on this resolution, calling for the California Legislature to enhance the conference.
There's no need, no need, no need. Voting on it up and down right now.
Point of order, we've had a motion, a second, and a call for the question and a vote. Point of order, we've had a motion, a second, and a call for the question, which was voted on. Two yeses and how many no's?
The question was not called for and voted on. It was not.
We have a, we have a.
Chairman.
And we have a substitute motion and that goes first.
There is no second on your substitute.
Okay, all right.
So motion by Knoblock, second by Ferguson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The noes habit, three to two.
City clerk.
Yeah, next item is item H, a report from the Economic Development Officer concerning the lease agreement for the T Street Concession Building.
Good evening again, Mayor James and council. In front of you is a lease agreement for actually the operator, that's our current operator within the T Street Concession Building. This council enacted a shorter term bridge lease for that tenant. And then staff conducted it in RFP earlier this year and received just this one qualified offer or bid to continue on as the concessionaire in that space. We did also just a couple of quick notable changes that are referenced within the report. Increase the requirement for rent at this building. Prior lease, for prior tenants had a baseline of $300 per month. The requirement through the RFP jumped that up to $2,000 per month. And the current tenant actually offered more than that in their proposal. So we are recommending that we continue on with them and that's the agreement that's in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I have a couple of questions. Jonathan, in some of the issues on page two of what would be permitted, when it talks about beach access via a gator or similar utility vehicle, what is a gator?
Sorry, I had turned my microphone off. A gator is off-road vehicle that's similar to a golf cart. And so you'll see those often taking trash out on the beach trail. So we had recommended that they take a look at a vehicle like that that just has better visibility for access while they're on the beach trail. As opposed to using a personal vehicle.
Okay, so they would be able to have that vehicle there the entire time they're operating? It would be able to sit there and be parked?
No, we would not allow for permanent parking. They would just have access in the mornings. There would be limited opportunities for additional visits on high-traffic days, et cetera, if they do reach out to city staff in advance. But the agreement that we would be requiring would specify the limitations there. And we'd be consulting with the Beaches Parks and Rec Director as well as Rod Malott, our lifeguard manager.
Okay, and where, do you know where that would access from to get to T Street?
That is accessed from the armbar entrance near the pier.
Did we talk to the JPIA about giving access to this vendor with a vehicle?
I can speak to that, so. Can you hear me? We have a process already in place that the JPI has approved to allow for access to the pier bowl. So for instance, Bob Novello's delivery truck drivers have to sign off on this and it's an indemnification and instructions on how to maneuver within the pier bowl. So they would be held at the same standards.
So certain employees are going to be able to do this, but not just anyone.
No, the form is specific to the individual.
Alright, I appreciate that because I know that's a concern that you, you tried to fix. The other concern I have is live acoustic music on Saturdays and Sundays between ten and two. I was under the impression that we had a, we don't even have radios that we allow on people to do amplified sound on the beach. We used to have it and I don't see a lot of it now where people play music because San Clemente, we didn't really allow that. But I'm just concerned with having live music on here. There is homes that are above T Street. I know that's, that's our public beach. But I, you know, everyone is really accustomed to not, not hearing music down on the beach. And I just don't know if that's something that we should be doing. It's almost like it's an event place to do that. And I know we didn't allow it. Did we not, did we allow it with our temporary patios out on Del Mar? Did we allow? So this is kind of like that. You know, I know kitchens might have something going and it's, even if someone's standing up there, they could maybe hear it. Having it be out where it's in that pool area, some people are doing like birthday parties or something else. I just, I don't know about that. I'm kind of concerned Jonathan because I'm, we haven't really done that on the beach. So what's the plan? Why, why are they asking for that?
Yeah, so this was the operator initiated request. And you know, their, their impetus or their goal is to have the concession stand be a gathering place whenever possible. And I think that their desire is to be, you know, provide some of those community amenities. You know, from personal experience, I know that we on occasion have limited term guitarists that'll be near the pier, et cetera, that are typically not in a permitted fashion. But to clarify too, just for the council, acoustic does specify it would not be amplified. And I have had direct conversations with them. They would have to go through a special event permit process with our BPR team to request any amplified opportunities. So there wouldn't be any speakers in, in use for something like this. My, my thinking and, and including it is we do also have a larger grade differential between the beach and residences at this location. And so the, the path of sound travel, I didn't think would be too much of a challenge at this particular location. That's why I was open to including that as a portion of the agreement.
I'm, I'm still not sure on that. I, I do understand. I said, you know, live, I said amplified and it's not amplified. But it is an event to have someone playing a guitar there and singing. And I just don't know that I'm willing to do that with a, a beach vendor at this time. Maybe like a special event, but not every Saturday and Sunday. I think it's going to take away from T Street and that's our, our naturally used public beach.
I was gonna recommend.
Thanks. Do you have a, wait, do you have a?
I would, I would just recommend if you don't want to do that, we could just let them know that they can't do any music without applying for an SCP. And the SCP limits the frequency and if there's a bad operator, I think it's more than four a year. I think it's upwards of 12 a year. But if they were a bad operator, then they obviously wouldn't get subsequent SCPs. And so maybe it's one of those things that we do that for a year, see how it goes. And if it's a success and they want to, we can revisit the council for an amendment to their contract.
Oh, thanks, Mayor James. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Lightfoot, can you define what one, what qualified proposal is? Like were there unqualified proposals received?
Yeah, no, there actually weren't any unqualified proposals received. I think a portion of that was the significant jump in rent requested. So qualified would have been meeting the criteria that staff outlined, including that baseline rent of 2,000 a month. And so we did have a number of visits to that facility as well as the others. But only one that submitted the, the full application and met the baseline $2,000 per month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then you include in here the North Beach Concession Building that we've received a qualified offer. However, the proposer is still discussing improvement requirements with the Orange County Health. Now, is, is that building still, are they conversing over the mold issue? Because remember we had a qualified bidder for the concession stand there a couple of years ago, I believe, right? But couldn't afford that remediation of the mold. So is that what we're still talking about?
It's actually not just that one element. There's a number of other improvements that would be needed to be made to the building. So that qualified offeree has visited the site with Orange County Health to take a look at what types of improvements could be made. So they're still working on what the final costs would be to bring that facility up to operating condition. And once they do have that final amount, then we'll be bringing that back to council if they do opt to proceed. But that was the only, again, in that situation, in that particular building, the only offer that came in through that process.
We've lost, that's been closed for quite some time. That potential tenant walked away. It's in here and Kathleen, please. It's in the agenda report. I'm allowed to ask. I, I just wish you'd stop trying to silence me tonight. It's, it's really unprofessional. So anyway, so excuse me, please, just. Thank you. Please, please just keep it, keep it professional Kathleen for one night. Are you done? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I can't ask my question. She keeps interrupting me. Thank you. Alright.
Alright, let's continue.
Oh, I've already forgotten my question, but thank you, Mr. Lightfoot, all those interruptions. I can't remember what I wanted to ask you. I can't remember my follow-up, but thank you very much. Actually needed that break. Thank you, Mayor James.
Okay, Mr. Noblock. Board, you have, you already commented, right?
I did. And so I would be more for a motion that eliminates the allowing them to do special performances Saturday and Sunday, but allow them to do, permit, go through a CEP for that. And, and what the city manager said, try for a, a year. Give them, you know, whatever Beaches Parks and Rec is gonna do on that and that'll go through the process. But I don't think I can say that it's good for the public beach to have music every single Saturday and Sunday.
West Coast is terrific. I know from walking the beach trail, they, they just have great service, great food. And I think it's notable here, we were getting six to eight thousand a year. They're gonna give us 3,000 a month. I mean, this is, let's give them the music, the acoustic music, Kathy. I mean, this is, this is a great operation. I'll support however we have to get them the lease, but what a great operator I think we're lucky to have.
Yeah, on, on that, in response to Councilmember Ward's comment about the music. You know, we, we need to have, we're giving them a lease. We want them to be successful. So I think the music's an important component of that. It's only 70 decibels. That's not ear piercing. It's not problematic in my opinion. And I think to allow monthly venues is not, is not problematic and will help them be a success and generate the income that staff recommendation.
It's 10 decibels less than pickleball.
Actually, pickleball is a lot more than 80, but it's a.
Did you say monthly? I thought I heard you say monthly.
I, I think the report does say.
3,000 per month.
Alright, yeah. So do I have a motion here?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute lease agreement by and between the city of San Clemente and Organic Concepts LLC DBA West Toast Cafe to operate out of the T Street Concession Building and to waive any permit fees associated with tenant-initiated improvements to the T Street Concession Building.
Second.
So, motion by Ferguson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
No, I'm a no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm a no because I don't think that's good planning to have it.
I stand corrected, 4-1. Board, opposed.
Oral Communications Part Two, I have a few cards. First speaker, Cord Bauer.
He left.
He left. Audrey. Brunner, Brunier, sorry. To be followed by Pastor Julie Penn.
Hello, my name is Audrey and I am speaking to defend San Clemente as a sanctuary city for life. If we defend life, we defend the morals and values of God in society and this is what strengthens us. If we do not defend life, then we witness the degradation of society and the separation of families and confusion. There was a talk show, gosh, I guess years ago. Supreme, Supreme Court Justice Scalia said it all comes down to the Ten Commandments. This is a Supreme Court justice at the highest levels of the law. We think of the Ten Commandments. We know that it was written, the Bible tells us that it was written by the finger of God, handed to Moses on Mount Sinai. And we know, I assure you that heaven has our best interests at heart. Years ago, I was substitute teaching at a local, at a local middle school. And the, the children were very difficult to control. And at the end of the day, there were papers and, you know, all over the floor. And the principal had come in numerous times during the day. And when I went to this school, you know, years later, a few years later, the kids were very good and they, you know, they, they listened to authority. They, they were just, it was completely different experience. And there were no papers, you know, on the floor. The principal didn't have to come in. And I questioned the office, you know, about this and said, why such a, you know, difference in the kids? They're, they're really wonderful. And they said that they got all new administration. So we know that the people at the top affect the attitudes and beliefs of the people being governed. So it is important. So aren't, aren't you liable if you don't defend life? This is, this is your duty. And so if, if we defend life, we are more likely to have fair elections as well. And I encourage you to view a film called 2,000 Mules if you don't have background information about election integrity. Because that would be very informative for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend Julie Patton. I am the pastor of Christ Lutheran in San Clemente. Every Sunday, we worship at North Beach. We see the part of our community that many people turn a blind eye to. They are human beings who need care and compassion. What they get is harassment and contempt. If they have to go to the bathroom at night, there's no safe place for them. They are often shaken awake and asked to move in the middle of the night. If they can't or won't move, they're given a ticket. How is an unsheltered person going to pay a fine or get to a court date in Santa Ana? If they have a swimsuit, they can take a cold shower at the beach, but often they only have the clothes on their back. How do they get medication and medical care? How do they receive mail? Often, they're treated like the invisible, or worse, they are spit on like trash. San Clemente has a responsibility to help all of its citizens. Those unsheltered people in our community deserve our respect, our care, and our compassion. Please try to come up with solutions that will help them meet their basic human needs. A place to shower, someplace to store their belongings, safe places for people who are living in their cars to park, and safe places for the homeless to camp. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more cards. Moving on to reports, the first item is the resignation of Amy Tallexon from the Public Safety Committee.
There's probably not a staff report on this, is there? Yeah. Um, it's unfortunate that Ms. Tallexon had to resign uh, from the Public Safety Committee. I was thinking about actually not accepting her resignation and, and contacting DA Spitzer. But I decided not to do that. It just, it does seem unfair to me that DA Spitzer allows a, a deputy DA to run the city council in Laguna De Gell, but won't allow a deputy DA to serve as a citizen on our Public Safety Committee. I put in a call to him today, I did not hear back from him. But I'm not gonna take, I'm not gonna take it any further. But what I will have is I want to have, if appropriate, city attorney, I will have a motion that we open recruitment for, for one member on the, um, on the, uh, Public Safety Committee, is that an appropriate motion at this time?
Uh, yes, I believe it is. The, uh, the staff reporter, uh, agenda item request that you provide direction to staff on solicitation, so yes.
So, second motion. Thank, thank you, sir. So motion by James, second by No Block to open recruitment for a Public Safety Committee member, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously, thank you. And now, uh, a, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Tallexon, who's an outstanding individual. May I have a second on that?
Sure, move, so second, I should say.
Um, motion by James, second by No Block, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we just mentioned that. City Manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor, just a brief announcement of CM-approved contracts, trauma intervention programs, better known as TIPS, for eight thousand and eighty-five dollars. BKF Engineers, it's a First Amendment to the Montalvo Canyon Outlet Improvements for forty-eight thousand dollars total. The increase was of forty thousand. Uh, Jilk Heavy Construction Maintenance and Inspection of Services, Mariposa pedestrian beach trail bridge at thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Eckersall, which is a GIS consulting service for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. SandCon, which is Concordia Elementary School Field Sewer Line Rehab for twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. And Mike Lenaris, he's our Community Development Block Program Administrator for thirty thousand five hundred. And that's all I have to report out, thank you.
Uh, anyone, anything for the city manager, I have one thing, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Mayor James, um, yes, city manager, uh, tonight we'll be adjourning to a, a meeting on August thirtieth, a joint session with city commissions and committees. Could you share with us what that's about, what the purpose of that is?
You're talking about the meeting that we'd like to have before the joint commission meeting?
It's called adjourn, um, no, that there's going to be a joint meeting with council and a planning commission, could you?
That's what we do every year, annually, with the commissions and the committees.
No, there's, oh, so there isn't one with the planning, um, commission and city council on a project?
Looking at the clerk's office, the one that she's referring to is the Joint Commissions and Committees Meeting. August thirtieth.
Is there going to be a meeting regarding, I saw something come across, maybe I should be addressing this to the city clerk's office. Can you let me know, there's a meeting on August?
There are two, two different meetings, one is August thirtieth, which is the joint Okay. council-commission committee meeting, which is the meeting that council is adjourning to tonight. That is, again, with all the city commissions and committees, it's an overview of the Brown Act and parliamentary procedures.
Okay.
Believe the meeting that you're referring to is a study session the following day, it's not been confirmed.
Okay.
Um, and that is, that's a joint meeting with, a joint study session with the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Okay, what's that about? I mean, what's the purpose of that? Do you know, city manager?
As was communicated to the council, this is a joint study session between the Planning Commission and the City Council uh, to have a study session on the project. I want to say it's at six fifty-four, uh, Caminos Los Mars.
Or the, the vacated hospital site.
That is correct.
Okay, and, and why are we having that meeting?
It's, answer this.
Yeah, good evening, uh, so we often have, uh, joint study session, or I should say, we often have study sessions with the Planning Commission for larger projects that will come before them. Given that this particular project will also come before city council, we've invited, or we're trying to arrange for the council to attend as well, um, for their, for an opportunity to ask questions and see the project prior to it coming to the city council meeting.
Okay.
And the reason for that is to provide efficiency, so that when it does come to the city council, your meeting that night will be, um, a lot quicker than not.
So this was advised by the planning, probably the planning department then?
Correct.
Planning Department, okay, excellent, thank you, I've, I've been wondering about that, thank you so much.
We good?
Yep.
Anyone else has, so I have one thing, city manager, uh,
I have one, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Okay, uh, and I probably should have given the city manager a little more notice on this, but, uh, I understand there's a, there's an issue with some lighting in our canyons. The property at three one eight seven La Rambla has some lights on a canyon area shining up the canyon, and I guess code enforcement, and I, I, Adam, I should have said something to Adam, so it'd stick around, perhaps to answer this, but I understand code enforcement has looked at the lighting issue, and it has been out there, but it hasn't been resolved, and I just was wondering, and I, you probably won't be able to answer that, because I, I gave you a very short notice, and you weren't, you weren't up on it, but that's an issue that I think needs to be looked at.
We will, uh, investigate, and we'll get an update to the council tomorrow morning via email.
And I'll second that, just to have direction, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Um, I just have a comment to ask the council to agenda something, but I'm, we're there yet.
Okay, you can do that under council member comments.
Okay.
Um, the city manager, I walked new, new chambers today. We're, we're within about a month being there, so I, I think our, is it September sixteenth or eighteenth meeting? Whatever that meeting is, second meeting in September, I think we're going to be there. And based on the quality of our audio tonight, that would be.
September, make sure on this one, September twentieth.
Twenty, September twentieth. So, so we're get, we're getting close there. And it looks good, I, I encourage you all to do a watch. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, council member comments?
I have one, uh, one question, uh, it's, I recently got some, an email regarding San, the San G Pickleball, and there was a, there was a reference to a hundred, a noise study that had been done with a hundred and one, I think it might, I don't know if my memory is right, but over a hundred decibels, is that? Is that, uh, is it that loud, hundred over?
It is not that loud.
I think I, well, maybe we ought to look at the report, it looked like I read a hundred decibels at certain times. That was well over eighty up to a hundred, which is, I think, uh, jet airplane taking off is about ninety-five, so that, and I may have read that wrong, but, but I, I hadn't seen that report before, so.
So, city, city manager, could you get that report to all of us?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to take, thank you very much.
City Attorney?
I have no report.
Council members? Yes, ma'am.
I just have one quick one, if the, the council will agree, I'd like the planning staff or, or communities to look into state grants that the city can ask for to provide a fund to help HOAs pay for cleanup of homeless. Um, I, you know, not just trash in the canyons, is how it should be. But there was a grant, and if staff could just look at it, I think we're too late for this year, honestly. But if we could look at it, and there is something, bring it back to council sometime, not soon, because I don't think it's gonna matter, because we've got to get in the budget year for the state. Um, but bring it back to us so that we can apply for that, or we can say to apply for that, because we're not saying that yet, I just want you to look into it, because I looked it up online, and I know we had it, and we were too late last year, so.
This, this is not far, far an agenda, this is just direction by, by council.
Yes, I heard it tonight, and I think we should pursue it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem? Uh, it's been a long night, I'm good. I, I have, I have, I have two things. Um, I think most of you, or all of you have received, um, basically what is kind of a quasi-proposal from Salty Turf Mini Golf, Miniature Golf. Uh, I sat through their pres, uh, presentation they gave me. Uh, I think it's worth looking at, well, it's their almost a park. But I think they want to go in the one point three acres, it's up against the solar panels. And, um, it would return some revenue to the city on, on an annual basis, probably about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. But more importantly, create a recreational activity for you, adults, old people, whatever. And, um, I would, you know, really like to consider looking at that and giving Salty Turf an opportunity to come in and, and do a special presentation to council.
I, I'd like to hear that presentation, I saw the, the paperwork on it. About fifteen years ago, the council entered a contract with a miniature golf, a local fellow that was setting up the miniature golf operation, and I don't, he couldn't get the financing or something, but it never materialized. But the concept for our kids would be a great amenity, the, the facility, so I'd like to learn more about it.
Right. It probably, I would probably require, if they are going to do it, I'd probably, we probably require an RFP. Uh, so if others wanted to do it, I think
Sure.
I think we would do that, but let's start off with listening to Salty Turf.
Would you agree to say two by twos or private, not have it at a council meeting?
We could do two by.
I don't know that we should be discussing it before we do.
I'm, I'm fine with two by two.
Okay.
We can facilitate that.
Very good. And the last thing I have, and this is not a dig on anyone, uh, I'm, I'm not even gonna talk about the drama associated with it. Uh, city manager, we need a policy on city letterhead. When is it used, when is it, when is it not used? I, I think every council member should have their own letterhead, and then that takes away all the, the drama and, and all the debate.
Would, it probably would be best to, to agendize it for discussion, and we can get into more of the details, and then out of that discussion, we can set a policy, or unless you want to just simply say, I want letterhead for individual council members and give direction to staff to generate that. We can do that relatively easy without further discussion.
I think if we have letterhead for individual council members, we don't necessarily need to attach a policy to it.
We can, we can make that happen relatively quickly.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, I worked at the city since nineteen ninety-nine, I, we always had a policy and protocol for, for use of, uh, letterhead, and I wrote many letters for council members. And if they expressed their own view outside of a council meeting that didn't involve council action, to utilize the city council letterhead as a body, is the only time it can be used. We put it on their individual letterhead. I recently, uh, did a support letter for a local group in San Clemente that's going to be submitting an application for a charter school to CUSD. And Courtney sent me my name across the top, I think it's the second time in my nearly four years on council I did it, so I didn't have the old one I did the first time, so I asked her to send me my letterhead, just under my name, no fancy, no, no side names with your name and the council, so it's always been protocol. I don't know why you don't know that, because you've been here almost nine years.
I, I want to make a comment, we do not have a policy for city letterhead.
Doesn't matter, it's a practice, it's a protocol, you know.
We don't have a policy for city letterhead.
It doesn't matter, you know, it's been a practice, so.
Ferguson, would you, would you like to make a, uh, a motion to have a policy?
No, not under the current situation, because this, this management has known it's been practiced for a long time.
I think, well, I, I will make a motion to have a, a policy on, on city letterhead, can I have a second? Second?
Can I ask for, just that, when staff brings that back, I, I'll give a third on that, that we have best practices? What city councils usually observe, because my, I'm in my eighth year, and I remember that it was the mayor that signed and sent out letters, and that you had to pretty much ask the council. It was just general, um, ethics and respect for the mayor, that we did not send out letters on letterhead.
Okay.
So, best practices.
I've got three votes, I'll be able to bring back sample policies for the council to deliberate on.
Okay, we, we have the
In twenty days.
Then we're not deciding it, it's right here, right now.
Yeah, right. Um, council subcommittee update, do we have any updates? So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, adjourn to the, to an adjourn regular council meeting be held on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at six PM in the Municipal Golf Course Banquet Room located one fifty Avenue to Magdalena, San Clemente, for the purpose of meeting in joint session with city commissions and committees. The next regular council meeting is scheduled to take place on September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Part one of the regular business meeting will commence at five PM, and closed session will begin at six PM. Part two of the regular business meeting will commence at seven PM. The meeting will take place in the Community Center Auditorium located one hundred North Calaisville, San Clemente, can I have a second?
Second, uh, quick question on that motion, uh, on the thirtieth, is the CCNR issue going to be on the agenda at that time?
That's our intent at this time, to have a special meeting before your joint commission meeting to deliberate on the CRNR contract.
So that will be on the agenda?
That's our intent.
For the thirtieth.
Motion by James.